Present and accounted for.
Okay, according to someone's
I am.
It is now 6:00 PM, so we are going to call this meeting into order. We are going to start with as we normally do the Pledge of Allegiance. Because we're virtual, we ask that you mute your microphone and also turn off your video if you would like. So we don't just see everyone standing randomly. I'm going to turn off my video now and I will recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. A roll call, please, Marie.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Yalter.
Yeah.
Mr. Dexter.
Here.
Mr. Markey.
Here.
That way.
Here.
Pine.
Here.
Gilchrist. And Attorney Engel.
I don't think he's here with us tonight.
Very good. Thank you.
And we do have several presenting, which we'll be calling on in just a moment. A quick review of online etiquette, especially if you're new to the online meetings. When not speaking, please mute your audio. You're encouraged to use headphones, ideally headphones with a microphone. So there's no feedback loop created. And if two or more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, power to you. But just make sure you only have one person's audio on. All right, we have a few people up first to present. First off, we have Bob Murphy from Barton and La Judas. He's going to discuss survey needs as they relate to the Greenway and trustees in the email. No, I don't have, I don't have documents in this one yet. Bob, please take it away.
Sure, sure. Thanks for, for having me tonight. You know, I wanted to, first off, with that survey information regarding the improvements on both the northern end of the Greenway Trail on Sewer Plant Road as well as at Waterworks Road.
I'm sorry, Bob, to interrupt trustees, it's document number eight that I sent you earlier. My apologies, Bob. Please continue.
No problem. So what's needed next for both is really a survey and for two different reasons. At the Northern Trailhead, as many of you know, the railroad did some of their own work a couple of years ago, or sorry, last year. And at that point, we already had some preliminary designs in place. So a survey is needed to make sure the work that they did, what effect, what changes need to be made based on that work. So that's really more of a, I guess, order of operations in the timeline need there. And the other end of the trail, the Waterworks Road, that has to do with the New York State Parks requirement that any, any funding that they contribute goes to a parcel that is going to be forever a park. So rather than including the entire 42 acres of that parcel on Waterworks Road, a survey would, would simply kind of give, give parks what they need, which is a mapped, a surveyed area that is to be encumbered by the, by the parks easement, rather than using the entire parcel. So those are the two reasons for the survey on each end. One thing to keep in mind is that the survey work for both projects can be put to their respective grants. These are eligible costs, so the village would be reimbursed 80% for the recreational trails program grant and 50% for the EPF parks grant. So those are really the next steps. I know the surveyor has, had provided a, a proposal letter. We don't have it. We were looking for it. We haven't been able to obtain it yet on our end. But that's really the next step in those pro, in those projects.
So Bob and/or Andy, is there any issue with putting these bids out for both projects? Even though technically speaking, the money sources will be from different grant programs?
From, from my end, and I'll let you chime in, Andy. I don't see there being a problem with the grants. They're small enough dollar figures and they're professional services. But I'll leave the rest to Andy.
Yep, Bob, I would concur with that, Rob. These are certainly qualifying as professional specialized services. And the fact that there's a couple of different grants. Bob, it's my understanding that initially the village pays these and then it's a reimbursement.
Correct.
So as long as it's properly accounted for and allocated between grants, I would not anticipate an issue.
Okay. So trustees, we have this listed on page five of new business, the Greenway. Do you guys have any questions about this, this need? Or questions for Bob on this project?
Yeah, Bob. When the Greenway was first built, I'm sure, I think that the Greenway was surveyed all the way from one end to the other. Why does it have to be done again, even though it was done at the beginning of the project?
Well, certainly the lay of the land has changed at the Northern Trailhead with the work that was done by, and the earth moving that was done by the railroad. So that's the reason up there. I don't think, let me check my files, but I don't think we have the one from 2000, from whenever that was, 2008, 2009. And, and this, I think what this would do would be, it'd be a, an edit to that essentially anyway. In that we're only going to encumber a certain piece of that full property. And that's why it was needed down at that end.
Just curious, I know, actually it was the same surveyor, so I was just curious why you'd be after doing it again.
Yeah, I can, I can get you a better worded version of that, you know, tomorrow, if that, if that works.
No, that's okay. Just curious.
Trustees, any other questions?
Um, I have a question for Bob Murphy. I just, I guess I just want to clarify. So are you saying that this need, they need a motion to put this out to bid for the surveying? Or when we find the proposal that was given, we can just go with it?
I, I think what would be needed here is just an authorization to approve the proposal. You know, conditional to, you know, reviewed by the mayor.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make clear because I wasn't sure if everybody was on the same page. So because it is professional services, it doesn't need to be, right?
Correct. Well, from my perspective.
Thank you.
I'd also add that final design for the Northern Trailhead area is already approved. Permitted, I should say. So once we have the survey, we can go right ahead, right into final design. It would just, the survey is really the, the linchpin here.
Any other questions?
Yeah, will the work that the railroad's doing or hasn't finished yet impact that at all?
We think it will only slightly. But we need to know exactly what those changes are because we were basing our design off another lay of the land up there. So I don't think it's significant changes, but you know, we may have to reorient some of the landscaping and parking drainage scenarios.
Andy, in terms of authorizing this, do we need to set up the actual schedule of bids?
Well, as I understand it, if there's been a proposal that's been received by one surveying consultant, I would concur in the record that because these are specialized or expert services, there's no requirement that they go out for bid. I just want to confirm with Bob, there's nothing under the grant documents that would require the work to be publicly bid?
I don't believe there is. We've, we've checked with parks on the Waterworks Road side of things. And there isn't anything specific to, for that, given the dollar amount. And I believe it's the same for the recreational trails program grant at the other end.
Right, we just want to confirm that we're not tripping up on any reimbursement under the grants because they weren't bid. Legally, it's not required to be bid because it's a specialized service contract. The other, other thing I'd note for the record is if you do have a proposal from the surveying consultant, whatever action you take should reference that proposal. If we have the date of it, that'd be helpful. If not, reference the proposal and authorize the scope of work and cost to set forth at the proposal.
The only date that I have on file is, Rob, I believe you authorized them to submit a proposal on November 9th. I saw that in an email. That's the only date I have.
Was that 2020?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just want to be specific on awarding the work, the scope of work as set forth in the written proposal and the cost. And as to schedule for work, Rob, I think the motion should indicate coordinate the work with schedule prepared by Barton and La Judas.
And I can, I can confirm those that we're not violating any procurement tomorrow.
Good.
All right, so trustees, unless there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion authorizing advertisements of bids for the specialized, what's that, Andy?
Rob, we just, this wouldn't be to advertise for bids for the survey work. This would be to actually award the work to the specific survey contractor pursuant to the terms, scope of work and payment terms in their written proposal. And if you have the survey contractor's name, that should be referenced in your motion too.
It's Wiley Survey.
Trustees, everyone go with that?
Yes.
So Andy, if I, if I have this right, because I've been taking a bunch of notes here. We're looking for motion to award the work to Wiley Survey and schedule to be coordinating with B and L on the survey.
Right, and we'll make sure the motion says you're going to award the work to Wiley Survey pursuant to the scope of work and cost set forth in their written proposal.
Did I have that motion from someone?
Motion.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Bob Decker. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, carries. Thank you, Bob. Any other questions for Bob before we go on? Awesome. Thanks, Bob, for joining us. Let's bring in another B and L guy. Ryan is here to discuss the latest progress on the Woodsbrook upstream project. This is the project that the village and town are going with together, separate from the Woodsburg buyout program. Ryan, take it away.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. So a quick, quick update on where we stand with the Woodsbrook project, the upstream project. As I think some of you are familiar, we've been progressing final design and permits for two sites. One in the town on Johnson Hill Road and one in the village at the end of Richmond Avenue. Final design has been completed on both of those sites. Permits to the Army Corps of Engineers and DEC have been submitted. And those are currently in the works. Those are pending. We have also been working with three different landowners for the two different sites to secure temporary easements. Those maps, descriptions and legal instruments are finalized. And now we're just waiting on some final signatures on those items. So with all that said, we're getting close to going out to bid on the project. As you know, this has gone through, you know, a lengthy environmental review and, and some other, some other delays as, as we go through, but we're looking forward to bidding this out and having this constructed this season. So I have, there's a resolution for the board's consideration this evening to authorize advertisement for bids. And our recommendation at this point is to wait a little while longer until we either have easements in hand or permits in hand, ideally both. But we do want to get this out on the street as soon as possible. The funding agency, this is CDBG funded, so the New York State Office of Community Renewal is the agency administering that at the state level. They have reviewed the bidding and contract documents and approved those. So we're essentially all set once we have those permits and easements in hand. And we wanted to go ahead and make sure that the board authorized advertisements so that we can move forward once we do have those in hand.
Awesome. Thank you, Ryan. And trustee, this is, it's on the screen, but the resolution is also document nine that I sent out. Any questions for Ryan on this?
Not so much on this, but have you had a chance to look at the lower part that through the village recently? And when will that be addressed?
So you're talking about the area where we're trying to target the properties for the Woodsburg buyout?
Yeah, but not so much the properties, but the stream itself. The, the sinkhole that is above the Main Street. And yeah, one of the property owners, also the retaining wall and one of the property owners to the left of the sinkhole and some of those other issues.
Yep. So the trajectory on that is we are, we have about, what is it, Andy? About five, five more months or so to finish off this portion of the Woodsburg buyout program? I'm trying to remember how on the extension went. We're going to spend, and hopefully for the, for the next meeting, we will hopefully have some business regarding this. We're trying to acquire the last few properties. We're going to be spending the next month getting our guys trained for doing a lot of the demo work, not all of it, but a lot of it. And that's going to be based on what our final properties end up with. And this late summer and fall is when we'll be doing the demo work for that. And ideally, Kevin, it will be including that property. And we're working with the county right now on that and another one. Andy, anything else you want to add to that?
No, but your, your timeline's correct. The extension was through a date later in September. So there is other property acquisitions to get completed and then the demolition work over the summer, early fall.
And then once that step is completed, then we go into the next portion of the money that was awarded from the state, which would be basically putting out, looking for a design now that we know what the properties are. I think we were funded for some sort of, I think it was an engineering planning grant that would allow us to take whatever properties we have and then go into further design to see what will be the next thing we can do with that, whether that would be going for another grant to make things happen. And the good news is I think that that would also include whatever work we're getting completed now with the Woodsbrook Drainage Improvement Project we're talking about upstream.
So when we tear the houses down, will be money left in the budget to landscape or put parking to those areas?
We, that's the, there's two parts to that. We have specific use of the money and we have to get to some sort of finished point with that, which I think will be some basic landscaping, but I don't think it would be anything like a full rendition of a finished area. It's just sort of the flattening it out, making it safe again. And then once that, then that program in its entirety, property acquisition and demolition and all the other stuff that goes into that, the funding was up to a million. Once we end that program, once we finish everything we came with the program, that money is gone. But we have other money that was awarded to us for the next step, which is the engineering planning grant. Andy, anything to add to that?
Just one thing that I think the state is looking that, at this, Kevin, is not allocating a lot of money or proceeds directly to landscaping at this point because that's really going to be part of the next design phase to determine what's the best drainage improvements. And that could include parkland, it could include more vegetation. But at this point, I think the goal of the current grant is property acquisition, structure demolition, stabilizing the site, and then it'll move forward into further design.
And the good news is we would be the owners as the village of these properties since we're acquiring them. So if further work or imminent work needed to happen, we wouldn't be, in a sense, hampered by the fact right now that we don't actually own that property. And the time it would take to, to sort of go through that and order that work, get that work to be done on an emergency basis or however.
Yeah, if we could just make that one house on Main Street the top priority to get that down, that'd be great. Since it's in terrible condition and it's eyesore.
Absolutely, on both accounts. It's a terrible condition is, I think, an understatement. It's a, there's some definite concerns about the property and the holes there and foundation.
Right, Kevin, is that 115 Main?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're, we're trying to work through that with the county.
Yep.
So could I say something?
Absolutely, please.
Okay, it's about the Woodsbrook Village Town project. Um, I had suggested, well, actually I hadn't suggested, but Mark and Ryan and myself had a conversation to kind of, to bid the Woodsbrook job as a primary site and then as an add-on or alternate or whatever you call it in the, in the engineering world. But if you guys are available, there just needs to be a conversation between, you know, all the parties that are involved, the town, the village, and where everyone decides to nominate as the primary site and which site will be the add-on. Because when that gets ready to be bid, you know, if it's overbid, if we put it that way, we have the option of, the board has the option of deciding what they want to do rather than rejecting the whole entire bid, which we all know we're under time constraints. So we're figuring that's the best route to go. Correct, Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Denise. I, I forgot to mention that aspect of it. So yes, as Denise mentioned, you know, the funding, the funding that we have for construction of the project is a set dollar amount. And we are, you know, the latest estimate shows that, you know, essentially, as I was sharing with my colleague Bob earlier, in a pre-COVID world, you know, we would be hoping for a low bid that was within the funding amount due to the volatility of bid prices that we have seen. And in talking with Mark and Denise, you know, we think that it would be the most prudent choice to bid out the project. Again, there's two sites, one as a base bid and one as a bid alternate. So then depending on where those numbers come in, the village and town can decide whether to progress only one site through construction or both. But as Denise points out, prior to bidding, we will need to determine which site is the base bid that we're definitely moving forward no matter what, and which site is the alternate bid to, you know, that will be dependent on funding. One thing to point out with the source of funding here, the CDBG funds, both sites have gone through all of their environmental review. We've been in conversations with the landowners and both sites are progressed through final design and permits have been submitted. So the reason I bring that up is we know that actually announced in the last day or so, there is another round of CDBG funds available with applications due at the end of July. So the timing of that is probably going to overlap with when we're going to be receiving bids for this project. And we, that's a conversation we can continue to have regarding whether we go after additional funds for that other site if, if, you know, due to bid prices, we can't do them both right away.
Trustees, any questions?
Um, I have one, Rob. Just, this is kind of thinking out loud, but the funds that we were discussing last meeting, would this be an application that would qualify for possibly? I mean, I know we don't have the rules yet, but if, if it, because of COVID, the costs have gone up and this is infrastructure.
So Craig is referencing the American Rescue Plan Funds, which I think that we, the, 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 the list of, of policies and procedures on that, Andy, was just released in the past, like 24 to 48 hours, right? And it's like 140 pages or something like that?
Yeah, they came out late yesterday. These are interim rules that are out for public comment now for a period of time before they become final. It's a wonderful 151-page read. Been through all of it yet, but we started going through that. So it's Craig right now out for comment, but that's a fair point that one of the goals, at least initially, that we get from these proposed interim rules is you've got to earmark this to some kind of economic impact to the municipality due to COVID. It's a fair point that if, if there are increased prices associated with bidding for this, and this is an infrastructure project, possibly there may be, if, if the villages in town is facing that on a bid or ad alternate basis, we should know more after this comment period has ended and we get final rules, whether that would qualify. But those are potentially available monies for the project too.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Andy. I, one other question. Is it obvious which portion of the project should be the primary? Or is there actually, I mean, from an engineering perspective, does one not work without doing the other first or something? Is, is it obvious or is there some amount of debate about which one would make more sense?
So from an engineering standpoint, they really are two standalone projects. So doing one, not doing the other, they're not going to impact, not going to have any direct impact on the other site. At this point, my recommendation would be to kind of see how, since we have not received any formal feedback from DEC or Army Corps, they could issue permits for both sites without any other questions. They could have some questions on one. So I think at this point, it's worth waiting to get some formal feedback from DEC, Army Corps. And also, once we have the temporary easements in hand and then make the decision, ideally based on, you know, which one is looking like it has all the approvals in place. Now, perfect scenario that we have all approvals for both sites. Then it's going to be purely a decision, really a discussion between the village and the town to determine which one kind of, you know, moves, moves to the, moves to the foreground.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, yes, I'm sorry, Rob. Ryan, is there a time limit as far as when this needs to be done by or started by? And when the money has to be used by?
Yes. So the current round of funding, in late last year, we requested an extension from the Office of Community Renewal. The request that the village and the town made to OCR was through the end of 2021. The, strangely enough, the, or the extension that was granted was granted through the end of June. Now, in our conversations with OCR, essentially, we have gotten the distinct impression that they are not looking to cut the project off midway through the year, but wanted to see where, essentially where we were at this point in the year. So we are looking to essentially move forward, get it bid out and then continue that conversation with OCR to follow the schedule that we had set forth last year, if that, hopefully that makes sense.
Yes, totally. Okay, thank you.
If, if I could add one thing to that scheduled discussion is that it would be useful to have the bid prices back, you know, before this current round of CDBG funding deadline occurs. That way you can see, the village and town can see if, if there, there is an overage, if further funding is needed, as Ryan mentioned earlier, there would be time to apply for that by the July 30th deadline. So getting those bid prices back by then would be more useful than not.
And I think just so we're all on the same page right now, the trajectory for bidding, not knowing when those permits may come in, probably by about this time next month, we'll be having a discussion whether to move forward with bidding without those permits, which we sometimes do. The work cannot start until permits are in hand. But as Bob mentioned, and you know, in line with the current funding deadline, we'll want to move forward to bidding at some point so that we can get those prices back and keep things moving, even if the regulatory agencies are still making their way through. even if the regulatory agencies are still making their way through, um, the actual permits.
Trustees, anyone else? And before I forget.
We need to do tonight?
Um, it sounds like we need to, uh, and the recommendation is, uh, this resolution, correct, Ryan? Put it back up here.
Correct. So the, uh, our recommendation at this point is to, um, authorize advertisements for bids at a time, uh, to be determined essentially.
I would make that motion.
Well, let me read the resolution, and then you can be the one to introduce it if you, uh, so, so. Choose, uh, resolution authorizing advertisements to bids for the Woods Brook Drainage Improvement Project. Uh, we've discussed ad nauseam the, all the whereas clauses, um, and they've been on the screen for a while, so I'm going to skip down to the now therefore be resolved that the village board authorizes the publication of an advertisement for bids in the village's official newspaper for the Woods Brook Drainage Improvements Project Phase One, according to specifications approved by the mayor at a date and time to be determined by the mayor. Uh, so I'm looking for someone to introduce that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Craig, in a second. I heard, uh, Bob first, I'll give it to Bob. All right, uh, any further discussion?
His name is Bob, too.
I'm biased, what can I say? Uh, any, uh, any further discussion, trustees? Um, anything else you want to, uh, throw in, Andy? Are we all good to proceed?
Nope, you're good to proceed. Uh, roll call vote.
Yep, all right, roll call vote, Marie, please.
Here, Alan.
Yes.
We have Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Alter.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Decker.
Yes.
And we had Trustee Pine off for it, all in favor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you. Any other questions for, uh, Bob or Ryan from Barton and the Jews?
Did, uh, want to bring that up about, uh, I think I sent it as an agenda item, but it never got on about the, um, updating our zoning laws?
Yeah, Kevin, I got an email like, uh, that Marie brought up to me because I, I didn't get that, but she forwarded it to me and I, I tried to shoot you a text earlier saying, feel free to bring it up, so absolutely, they're here, ask away, please.
Yeah, I talked to Mark and also, uh, Bob about updating our zoning laws. At one time, there was an issue about boarding houses, also, uh, an issue about, uh, shipping containers being used in residential areas, uh, full foundations, and there was a couple of other things I brought up to Bob, and Bob had some recommendations how to proceed with that. Bob still there?
Yes, yes, still here, Kevin, yep. Um, yeah, so, um, we had included some recommendations to kind of address those, those issues in the code, um, both in our, um, our 2015 report, um, as well as in the, the comprehensive plan that was updated. Uh, it was, was adopted last, I think the last March, right before, um, things got shut down. So what I, uh, really wanted to, to get a feeling from you guys today is, is, is this a situation where we're, we're just trying to update a couple pieces of the code? Uh, kind of piece by piece, or, um, is a real look at the, at the overall code, um, now that the new comp plan is in place? Desired, um, just from a planning perspective, once you update your comprehensive plan, in this case with the, with the village, uh, putting one in, it really makes sense to kind of look at your code to ensure that it, it exemplifies the vision and objectives of that new plan. You know, it is a bigger effort than just looking at, uh, a, uh, individual laws piece by piece. But it allows you to have that more comprehensive look, um, at things, uh, to help hopefully achieve the vision that was set forth in that plan. So, um, I just wanted to see what the urgency was, um, and then kind of what the overall scope of that project looked to everybody.
Well, I guess, uh, trustees, my thoughts would be, um, I would be eager to review what those recommendations are, uh, that, that Bob mentioned before, and have our, um, our code enforcement and our local law people, which is Kevin and Deb, I think. Is anyone else in local laws on our committee beside, uh, Deb?
Me.
On Emily, all right. I have, I had a draft copy, I didn't have my final copy here in front of me. Uh, I'd like to sort of have the three of you, maybe, um, get, uh, the documents together, do a review and think, um, if you think we need to kind of, and also include Mark, obviously, um, the, the four of you really, and then discuss if you think it needs a couple additions, or if you think it needs a, a full look through. And then I think we would go to Andy next to see what our next steps would be. What are your thoughts on that, trustees?
Um, I'm not really sure, uh, but I was thinking, uh, piece by piece. But, uh, certainly the village is changing with a lot more businesses downtown, so I don't know whether we should, uh, do a, uh, more comprehensive review or just piece by piece.
Well, I'll tell you what, let me, um, and Marie, please, um, make a note for me to do this in this coming week. I'll start an email thread, and I'll ask you guys, um, what specifically, uh, you want to address. In the meantime, we'll start getting documents and our previous recommendations together, uh, and we'll keep moving on it from there. How does that sound?
Good. Uh, I, I think that's great. Um, I would suggest maybe that providing a copy of the zoning laws to everybody, because, you know, they're great reading, and I'm sure everybody would like to read through them. But it might help to, to, you know, breeze through them and then see what kind of state they're in, and that might help make that decision.
ARPA policies and zoning laws, we are just great reading, uh, for everyone tonight. All right, thank you, Craig.
I'd also add that, um, you know, again, depending on the urgency of these changes, you know, now that there is a, uh, the village has an entry into the LWRP program from Department of State, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, um, that does open up the door for more funding. If you recall, it, as part of, uh, those who maybe attended some of our meetings, what was approved by Department of State a- as the comprehensive plan was also a local waterfront revitalization strategy. They would be, I think, very much inclined to fund, um, the transformation of that into a full program and zoning code update um, in this funding round that is also due at the end of, of, uh, July. So I just wanted to put that out there as well for consideration. The downside to grant funding, as with any grant funding, um, pursuit is time. So, you know, that wouldn't be awarded until December, you'd be looking at starting next spring after procurement on that sort of larger effort, if, if that was what was, um, desired. But then the flip side, you would get up to 75% of it funded, um, by Department of State, so.
You know, it fu- it was funny that, uh, I came across a, um, a plan that the village did back in, I'm not sure it was the eighties or nineties, and it incorporated a, um, a landing and, uh, stairs down from where the village's road is caving in on Route 22.
Right.
And went down to the village, uh, waterfront and waterway, or Greenway. And that was a fantastic program. If someday the village could get a hold of that property where the, the road is caving in and, uh, make that happen, that'd be a great addition to our Greenway and waterfront.
Wasn't that something that, um, Ross Sternberg was working on?
Um, he was, but this particular was a, uh, proposal by, um, Vermont-based, uh, engineering firm, and I have the drawings here somewhere.
Yeah, they were pretty neat.
I'd love to see them.
Yeah, and, and projects like that were referenced in our, um, you know, comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization strategy, and would be prime targets for funding from the Department of State. So, um, there is that, um, I guess vein of funding going forward.
See, the only big problem with that, uh, particular property is the owner has, uh, disappeared and
Right.
there's been no contact with them.
Right.
And we'll be hearing more about that property from Mark later. All right, Bob, Ryan, uh, thank you guys very much for, uh, coming on, um, giving us this information, answering questions, helping us through this.
No, no problem. I'll, I'll get you guys the, um, those recommendations too, um, tomorrow.
Great, make sure that Kevin, uh, is CC'd on that as well as Marie, please.
Will do.
Awesome, thank you. All right, uh, Bill Johnston, are you still on?
I hope so.
Woo-hoo, thank you, uh, for your patience, Bill. I was hoping we'd, uh, get to you sooner, but, uh, we had some good stuff.
It's quite all right.
Um, so Bill, you're going to review the proposed, uh, zoning map changes as this relates to Lovejoy? I'm sure Andy will chime in, because I know you guys have been working together on this.
Yes, um, Lovejoy owns three separate parcels in the village. Uh, 12 River Street, where their manufacturing facility is located, and two vacant parcels on Carey Avenue to the rear of the Lower Street property. Two of the parcels were included in the commercial industrial zone, but the third one was not. And it is an integral part of the operation of Lovejoy's business. And, uh, the petition is to amend the zoning map to include that third parcel. It's a 17 Carey Avenue. Presently, the two vacant parcels are used for employee parking.
And trustees, this is document number five, which would be local law number two of 2021. Andy, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, not much. I mean, Bill adequately presented it. It, it's the petition by the property owner just to change the zoning classification of that one parcel, 17 Carey Avenue, uh, to CI Zone. The applicant has prepared the environmental assessment form to support the petition, and you authorized me at the last meeting to prepare the proposed local law to make that map amendment. So that's up on the screen now. Uh, it's identified as introductory local law number two. There'll be another local law to, to discuss tonight, which is introductory local law number one. And very simply, um, identifies the purpose and intent, the zoning map update to classify that tax map parcel and place it in the CI zoning district. Uh, as with any local law, this does need to be introduced this evening, if the board is so inclined, and then notice and hold a public hearing, uh, on that local law.
So trustees, we spoke about this last meeting, and we all seemed very, um, positive in terms of moving forward with this. Do you have any questions on this or for Andy or Bill?
Bill, what is their, uh, plans for the property? I know they use it for parking, but is there any other plans for, uh, truck traffic or anything like that?
Anticipated that, Kevin. Uh, no, the, uh, continued use as, uh, employee parking.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Kevin, I'd simply note that by putting the parcel into the CI zoning district, it, it would allow uses that are allowable in the CI zoning district, but if there's a proposed change of use on the property, that'd be subject to site plan review by the planning board, so that they, they could address issues about traffic circulation and, and, and things of that nature. So this local law would simply place the parcel into the CI zoning district, which would then open up that parcel for uses allowable in that district.
I was just curious, some of the, uh, houses around that area are, are residential?
Any other questions, trustees? Hearing none. Andy, we need someone, you said, to introduce and second the local law, and then we need to set a mo- uh, we need a motion instead of public hearing, is that correct?
Uh, almost. It, it simply needs to be introduced by a trustee, a- and then, uh, not seconded. You're not doing any action tonight. Just introducing the local law and then set a public hearing.
Rob, I'll entertain that motion.
All right, so Bobby is, uh, Bobby Ryan is introducing the local law, which means we need to set a public hearing, uh, for this, and then the public hearing will, uh, have the minimum 30-minute comment period, uh, which case the board will be able to make their decisions on what they want to do next. Um, I'm thinking the next regular meeting is June 8th, and that would seem to be a fine time for public hearing, uh, if that works for people. And I would just need, uh, a motion setting the public hearing for local law number two um, on, uh, June 8th, and will we say it at 6:00 PM, Andy?
Um, well, this is identified as local law number two. There's another local law that, that is to be considered for introduction tonight, local law one. Just sequentially, I think that, um, public hearing, if introduced tonight, should be set at 6:00 on local law one. This one should be set a little later. I know you generally keep your public hearings open for a half an hour. I will tell you, just as a, a matter of procedure, that's not legally required under the village law. It's been the pa- past practice of the village board, and there's a problem with continuing that. Uh, just for purposes of scheduling, it would make sense to schedule this one at 6:30 then, and you can formally open it at that point.
All right, so, uh, with, uh, his advice and recommendations, I'm, I guess we're looking for motion instead of public hearing for 6:30 PM on this one on Tuesday, June 8th.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby, and that does need to second. Thank you, Bob Decker. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion for the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? All right, it passes. Public hearing is set for 6:30, uh, on Tuesday, the 8th. Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Bill.
If you don't want to stay, we can recommend some good light reading for you. All right, let me go back to our announcement. So let me, uh, plow through these. We do have, uh, a, a quite a bit, and I basically copied and pasted everything, uh, from the agenda, so it appears, uh, on the screen as it is, the agenda. First thing is we have street cleaning coming up. Uh, I'm sorry, it's already started. It started on May 10th. Um, as in the past, the side of the road corresponds with the date and the numbered addresses on the street. So if it's an even date, then the side with the even number houses will be cleaned. Please do not park on that side of the street. We are going to be going with Ward 4, then 3, then 2, then 1, and we will likely take multiple passes through the village. And please note that the machine is not, uh, used or ideal or set up for cleaning up leaf pile or, uh, sucking up brush, so please don't put things, uh, on the street edge like that. It will actually probably more likely than not mess up, uh, the machine. Neil, if there's anything you want to add to that, please chime in. Um, and additionally, uh, we have hydrant flushing. We had originally scheduled it for May, but we're actually not doing it right now because we're in the, uh, in the GAC changeout process, which I think is our fifth one uh, in the pro- the lifetime of the, um, filter so far, um, the filtration system, rather. But, um, when that hydrant flushing happens, they'll be doing wards one and two on June 7th, and wards three and four, June 8th, so we'll make sure that's up. Uh, second set of announcements, we are reopening the village office windows for normal business during our regular hours, which are Monday through Thursday, 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM. Uh, we had been acting as a call ahead, uh, to schedule an appointment, or if someone showed up and just banged on the door, our, uh, wonderful, uh, office staff would run out and, uh, let them in. But we do have all the proper protections up, and, um, the office, uh, staff is good with this move. Um, and of course, since it's indoors, um, social dis- distances, distancing guidelines and masks, um, almost be, uh, be used. Uh, the village clerk has approved the peddler license for Bistro 42. As a reminder, um, we used to approve them here before we realized that the, uh, the law actually gave the authority to the village clerk, or, or maybe we changed the, there was a recent local law, I can't remember exactly, but uh, it's now the village clerk's decision, so we're just going to, each time it ha- comes up, report it here. Uh, and the annual village-wide tag sale will be held on Saturday, the 29th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The event is sponsored by Who's A Garey Here and Now and by Kevin O'Malley. To be included on the map, that is handed out, there's a $5 fee. Funds are used for advertisements and press releases. Check out the Who's A Garey Here and Now Facebook page for more information, or reach out to Kevin. And, and you're going to see Kevin a lot on all of the events and, and such, and we just, we're very appreciative for Kevin and all his work he does on this, as well as all the folks who are involved in all these events. Another event coming up, uh, which is, uh, in my mind, really good news, uh, Who's A Post, uh, Post for 40, Who's A Falls Memorial Day Parade, uh, is going to go on, and it's going to be held on Monday, May 31st at 10:00 AM, but it will have some changes from the norm. Marchers, floats, and antique cars, social distancing, and masks are required. Uh, you have to send your information in the man- Uh, you have to send your information in the mail or email it to uh Kevin at his address, which is on the screen, who'sakid@gmail.com. And due to COVID tracking, you must fill out an entry form to march. Step off is ten A M. Sharp for the parade and the morning ceremony uh is at eight A M., which will also start in the park. Uh, and there will not be the typical um memorial service at the Wood Park gazebo after the parade. Uh, so those are the changes to the event, but I know trustees, we spoke. One of our recent meetings, um support wanting to support this, so I'm I'm glad to see. Um, that they are our worker on this. And again, Kevin, thank you for your involvement in this and and all the other events. Um, trustees, any questions or anything you want to add to any of the announcements? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to proceed on with a few quick mayor updates. Uh, we've already talked about the new local, uh, one of the new local laws. We are going to be introducing the chicken law and new business as well. Um, tonight, we've already done uh the zoning map. And uh as all with all local laws, we'll be putting things on the website. Uh, there'll be a public hearing set. Um, and the board will decide what happens next, the next meeting. Also, I've already reached out to Bill Gaylord and he's already started to talk with his community band members. Uh, we are planning on doing some repairs to the village gazebo. Um, originally, we talked about a year or two, as actually it was about two years ago, we were planning to do last summer and get the work done and then COVID hit. Um, on the gazebo, we had originally planned on doing a a replacement of the wood flooring. Uh, we are now looking for a couple of different reasons. Instead, it would, but actually it tracks flooring it. Um, it is more expensive, but it lasts longer. And if you have been purchasing wood lately, you will notice that things have actually gone up. By a pretty good twenty, thirty or forty percent or more uh than where prices were last year. So I think it actually makes a lot more sense to go this route. Um, we have money budgeted from this current fiscal year, which ends at the end of May. As well as next fiscal year to put into the gazebo. It's an important part of our community, of our village. Um, and I'm glad that we're going to be involved in that and Bill is uh working on getting. More quotes and information uh to us as well as seeing how many of the workers in community band who have. A contractor experiences are going to be involved. So I will have more information for the trustees and everyone else at the next meeting. Any other questions on that? All right, pretty hefty update on the water source. I dedicated a full page in the agenda to this to make sure that it goes out. On April twenty first, New York State Department of Conservation released the proposed remedial action plan called the Prap. This plan outlines New York State D E C.'s proposal for a new water source for the village of Housick Falls. All documents are available online and at the village office and at the Cheney Library. Uh, this is a step that we have been working towards for years and we are on the precipice. Of this decision being made, so it is a very important time. Uh, all right, the Prap includes a new groundwater source. It would be the existing. Test wells south of the Housick Falls, uh, south of the village, which are the Wysocki and the Cross Parcels. Those will be converted to production wells and become our main wells. Um, the Prap includes retaining one of our existing village wells as a backup supply. Uh, and very significantly, D E C.'s Prap um proposal calls for continued operation. Of the existing G A C GAC filtration system, which assures the removal of PFAS chemicals. D E C. Is holding a virtual public meeting and presentation on May thirteenth at six P M. To provide the public with an opportunity to learn more about the Prap, ask questions and provide comments at this meeting. The village of Housick Falls will speak uh to its thoughts on the Prap and this will include comments from myself, from an environmental attorney, Dave Engel. As well as Mark Mills Paul and Mark Williams of Sterling Environmental. And for those of you who don't know, Sterling Environmental was brought in. By the village as environmental and geological experts to independently review the Prap. Also, the municipal water supply study and any other existing data to prepare comments on the proposal. For the village and I've already spoken with D E C. Once their video is um saved and and available, I'm going to um post. Our comments, the specific part of the video, and I'll link the entire video as well. But I want to make sure that our comments are out and available for everyone to see on our website, on our Facebook and YouTube page and on other social media. Um, locations. Um, with the Prap is a forty-five day public comments period that is running now and runs through June fourth. Uh, the village will be uh submitting comments as well, of course, um not just our our. Verbal comments on Thursday, but we'll we'll have some more detailed uh comments as uh as well. That we will get in in time for June fourth deadline as well as making it public. Um, and we will have those up once they are completed. It will be later. Um, and comments, anyone uh can submit comments uh by mail to Ian Bilby on the screen or his email or the email address, who's a water supply. At D C dot N Y dot gov. And if you look on the agenda, I don't have it on the screen, but if you look on the agenda or if you do some Google searching on D E C.'s website. Um, the directions for how to join the public meeting are there. I will also. Post those. Um, I don't know if trustees, you want to add anything or Dave or Andy want to add anything? I think that kind of summarizes it. I just wanted to highlight it and note it because of its importance.
Uh, Rob, uh, Dave Engel here. Uh, excuse me, uh, just to note a couple of things. Um. As you pointed out, the village has retained Sterling Environmental. And they have gone about their business, I think, in a very serious and professional manner. I think there's generally been a uh sort of a welcoming attitude to the proposal. That D E C. Set forth as the as their preferred way to go on this in the Prap. Which is the mayor described would be the development of the Wysocki and La Crosse wells. We've already had discussions with D E C. Of a technical nature. Uh, I would characterize our position as one of, uh, let's say. Reasonably cautious endorsement at this point in the sense that. We think there are other measures the department should be adding to. What they've described as as the preferred option here. And not to give away what we will be discussing further on Thursday night. These measures would include such things as what are called sentry wells or monitoring wells that would be interposed. Between the new wells and the area of contamination uh at the present well well field. Uh, we think it's vital that the village have as much protection as possible. And if there's a movement of the contamination from the existing area towards the new wells, we want to find out about that well ahead of time. We certainly welcome the idea that the G A C. Filters will remain in place. Uh, the Sterling um. People have questioned, let's say, the advisability of keeping what generally is thought. To be well seven on the current system as the primary candidate for the backup well. Uh, since it is in an area of high contamination. And while I don't necessarily expect this issue to be resolved too soon. Uh, one of the positions we've stated to the department is the need to find. A backup well or a third well in an uncontaminated area as as a preferred way to go. As the mayor indicated, the meeting on Thursday night, which could also, I guess, be described as an informal hearing is open to everyone. And we certainly encourage everyone to tune in and to ask whatever questions they have. And to voice whatever comments or concerns that they may have on this matter.
And as Dave said, um, we will have our our experts, um, Mark Mills Paul and uh Mark Williams from Sterling on. And they will be speaking as well and we will make sure to put all of um. Uh, we'll put that video up and uh later down the line when our comments are. Completed uh for the June fourth comment period deadline, we'll also be posting those. We want to make sure that all of this information is out there so that people um know what's going on and. Uh, can have their voice be heard and that's certainly what we're hoping for. Uh, trustees, anything else you want to add? All right, thank you, Dave. And um, let's move on to the people to be heard section. Just as a reminder. Uh, when you are called upon, begin with your full name and street address. You can either. Use the uh hand raising thing that's part of Zoom, which I think can somehow pop up for me. Um, and then share and speak what you would like to discuss. Um, depending on how many people to uh that we have, we may put a small bit on it, but for the most part, we just kind of uh let it go and and see how it goes. So. Uh, is anyone on who would like to uh speak to something? Ah, Jason, sorry, Jason Funigan has raised his hand. Jason, uh, what do you got for us?
Uh, so basically, I'm finally in a position where I'm going to be taking uh ownership of one center street, which is the better known as a specialty building. And uh with that property, I'm going to redevelop it, obviously, but I'm going to need. Participation and cooperation with the village in regards to soliciting grant monies. So I kind of need to like partner with the village to uh, you know, acquire all the grant money and stuff that I need to get this project done. So before I put. Any of my own efforts into it, I just want to make sure that I kind of have the blessing of everybody on the board. Uh, moving forward, when I come back and say, hey, this is my proposal. These are the monies I've procured. I need the village to sign off. I just want to make sure you guys are all good with it.
That's awesome. It took quite a while, but uh glad to see it happening.
Yeah. Aching.
Yeah, I'm all in for that. There's, I mean, it's better than a vacant lot.
I I'm all for it too.
Absolutely.
I sent you that picture, so.
Jason, that's great. Uh, we have actually talked about that building and you've come up as uh someone who is trying to track that uh track that building down and and get it. So I think uh as you're hearing, we're all very glad that you uh have finally gotten that building. Um, and uh we will uh offer what we can when it comes especially to um. Uh, helping with grant funding as as much as we can, as much time as we have. But I think you'll have some trustees who would want to uh hop in and help out with that, no question.
Much appreciated. So just so they know, at this point, I'll report back to the county attorney. And uh I should probably have cleared title in like two, three months and then I'll start doing my thing.
Outstanding, Jason.
Great news.
Thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Investing in the community and it's been paying off and I'm just, man, that's just great stuff. Thanks, Jason, very much.
Right on.
All right, I see Harold's hands up. Harold, take it away.
Actually, it's Marion talking for Harold Wilder Avenue. Um, what we're, we saw the law for the chickens. Any updates on this still removal law?
That's something that's in the works. Um, we're actually, Andy and I were talking about the local laws. We're actually hoping that um we can get a draft law to you. Um, uh, to to sort of the public next meeting. Um, we have some some draft things worked out. I have some things to review. We're going to bring in um our trustee who's involved in that, so it is in motion.
Okay, we just didn't see it on the agenda. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, I have someone who has their hand raised and the name is iPad. So iPad, please take it away.
Uh, hi, this is Jerry Gregg, uh, twenty-five Main Street.
Hi, Jerry. I have uh, I have missed a bunch of opportunities to get back to you on the water bill. Uh, my apologies on that. I have been running nonstop. I know you've reached out a bunch of times to myself uh and to Marie in the office. Um. My apologies, I even was trying to get um a call to you before this meeting. Uh, and I was literally up until uh the meeting, getting all the the PowerPoints and documents ready, so my apologies, but please take it away.
Okay, uh, well, basically, my uh bill has gone. Two and a half times the the water uh bill from the period last period. Uh, of the same period from the previous year, it was forty-six thousand and went to a hundred and nineteen thousand gallons. We've discovered that it was a leak on the right side of the meter. Uh, where the uh gaskets had failed. I had the plumber come in and he uh has uh stopped the leak and uh repaired it. Uh, but uh I'm still suffering the uh excessive use of water and excessive bill. That I really had no use for and neither did any of my tenants. It's uh, so it's two and a half times the usage that it was before, so I'm asking for some help from the village to uh. Reduce this bill. It's over two thousand dollars, so.
Give me just one second. So um, I I wish I had better news for you. Uh, we've had similar situations like this come up related to a leak. Um, and what we have done in the past, and I'm trying to bring it up right now. Is we've gone back to our water law to figure out what exactly we can and can't um. Um, uh, approve a a refund on. And uh unfortunately, um, the law is pretty specific on what we can and can't do. And a leak uh like this is considered something that we cannot um. Offer a refund on. I know it's been a frustration point for many folks, um, and we are limited by what the local law is. I'm trying to find that right now, um, the document, so I can bring that up. Um, and I know, Andy, we've spoken about this many times and I'm, I thought I had the the document stored away somewhere and I'm just not finding it right now.
Rob, Rob, while you look for that, just to remind the board members. The village's water law is local law number two of two thousand nine, which does. And that law provides that adjustments in billing, this is section three eleven. The amount of water registered by any meter shall be charged and paid for in full. Irrespective of whether such water, after having been registered, was lost by leakage, accident or otherwise. And then section twelve goes on to talk about refunds and abatements. And what it says is a refund or abatement on a bill for metered water. Can be made only for one of the following reasons. One. When an error has been made in the reading of the meter or the preparation of the bill. Two, when the meter upon test shows an average over registration greater than two percent. Or three, when any charge of the village has been paid twice or incorrectly. And unfortunately, that that's the in this situation, that that's what the local law rules are governing this determination. And the local law does not provide any further discretion on adjusting the bill based on leakage.
Okay, so if the leak occurred on the other side of the meter, it would just, I wouldn't be charged, but we would still have the the wasted water.
Well, yes, because in that case, it would not have registered on the meter and that seems to be the touchdown of of the local law, the water law.
Okay, um, I do have another issue that I wanted to bring up also. Uh. Is there, is this the time?
Yeah, absolutely, please. Yeah, and I I did throw up on the screen. My my apologies for forgetting this late uh to you, but that is uh. The local law of two thousand nine that uh Andy was referencing, so my apologies on on not getting that up late. Yeah, what else do you have for us?
Okay, uh, the other thing is the parking situation. Uh, we, I have a number of complaints from the tenants. Uh, there's not enough parking. And because of the influx in business and uh the additional business as well as the uh. Uh, adding apartments, uh, they're having a real tough time parking. And uh mainly the building that I have on Classic Street. Uh, twenty-four Classic Street, that's the ones that are having the, you know, the most issue, even though there's a small lot down. Next to the building across from the uh laundromat. There that things fills up really fast and tenants are not being able to to park there. So I'm wondering if there's any way to get additional spaces, uh, maybe. Uh, clean out some spaces that are uh land next to that, that that they could park at or uh get some of. Maybe permits for tenants to park uh overnight. On the street. Uh, and I know that some of the uh, some of them even walk to Cumberland Farms to park, but they said that that has a. Is a is an issue also. Um, there's a lot of spots that weren't available over there.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, Kevin, go for it.
I was looking at Jerry's uh parking lot, the parking lot next to his building, which the village owns and um. There's some material between his building and the parking lot. Jerry, you know, that's your property where the debris is or is that? Lord of the village?
No, that belongs to the to the village.
So I was, when I was looking at it, because I I heard that you uh were worried about parking. And I was thinking of that, some of that was cleared out. Perhaps we could add two more parking spaces to the area. And maybe Neil could look at that and see if that's. And maybe Neil could look at that and see if that's any kind of option.
Jerry, do you mind if I throw um, a Google Maps um, overall overhead sight line of uh, your property, so I can show what Kevin's talking about?
Yeah, not at all.
Okay, give me just one second. And I know that this is something that has come up um, many times, not just um, in this specific location, parking in general, and um, I know we made some recent changes uh, that have had some, some impacts that we're looking at reviewing again as well. Okay, am I sharing the map right now or no?
Um, no. I'm not seeing it.
Let me do that then.
But I think it's something we're gonna have to look at even further than just this lot.
This is what we're talking about here, right? Is it sharing now?
Yes. Yes.
And are, are you talking about the bottoms of the parking lot? Uh, um, is, is where there's debris there?
No, it's just the uh, right side.
Over here?
Yes.
Okay.
There's just some uh, some brick and some uh, piles of dirt and that kind of thing in there. But it uh, abuts Jerry's building, but there, it could be the possibility of a couple more spots there that was removed.
All right, well, um, Marie, let's, let's uh, reach out to Neil in the next uh, day or two and let's see if we can get some cleanup done there. Um, on just the simple debris and we'll start looking at uh, if there's a long-term um, uh, plan for maybe adding a spot or two there. I'm not sure if Neil's on and wants to chime in, but that, that would be our, our next steps on that.
Jerry, how many apartments do you have or how many?
There's uh, seven in there.
There's a new apartment in the um, at the back of the new jewelry store too, two-bedroom apartment. That's gonna need parking.
Yeah, and there's other apartments that are uh, coming about in that area also, so.
Yeah, and I know we've been trying to, to find ways to get parking um, in around that area. Um, and we, you know, we're limited with what we, we own and don't own, um, and, and a bunch of other things, but yeah, understood.
So there's no parking on that Whozic, oh, you just put it down, that Whozic River?
Around, along the Greenway?
Yeah, the Greenway. Is there any way to get additional spots there?
I don't think so. I'd have to go back to looking at uh, easements. I know that when we acquire land like that, just like we're acquiring land for our Woodsbrook buyout uh, in the center of the village, we're very specifically limited um, by what things can be done there. And I think that would um, I, we would have to do a little bit of a, of a deep dive into that property to see if there were requirements on the Whozic Greenway um, property there.
Jerry, is that a right-of-way that goes behind your building that can be accessed by um, Bistro forty-two and in your building? Is that how that works?
Yeah, my building doesn't really access it. Uh, it did years ago when they had a, when we had a bar in there, but uh, uh, there, there's, or that road that goes exactly to Bistro forty-two and uh, the, the other apartment there. But I was looking years ago, I tried to buy that property between Doug's Oil and my building and uh, that was, I don't know who owns it now, but I was trying to buy that and see if I could somehow make that parking, but uh, um, it just wasn't for sale at that time.
Yeah, we've actually looked a little bit into that property and a couple others in that area. We've hit the same issue.
Is there any, is there any way, I'm sorry, is there, I'm sorry, is there any way to get a, a permit parking uh, for, for at least some of the tenants so that they can park on the street overnight? Is that possible?
So are you referring to the on-street parking right here to, to limit it to uh, only specific uh, apartment locations?
No, I, I mean, just have, give a permit to uh, the tenants so that they could park overnight.
And if?
Between the restricted hours.
And if the board wanted to pursue that, would that be a local law change?
Uh, it would be because it's regulating uh, public street and parking on a public street. We could, we could look at that.
And I feel like we're already kind of looking at some parking in other areas, so maybe we'll add that into uh, the look. And, and at least vet out if that's a, a direction I think we, we want to go in. And I'm just, I'm not sure because we haven't looked at, at all the parking there, but we, we definitely hear you loud and clear, the parking uh, continues to be a struggle in the village.
All right, I appreciate that. Now, I heard years ago that there was half of the lot behind uh, it used to be right at, I guess it's Walgreens now, um, was public parking. Is that true or not?
You're talking about this lot uh, over here?
Yeah.
This is Walgreens. This is public parking right here. Uh, and there's no limits on the timing of that either. There's a couple limits over here for the police parking and the, the judges, but that's it. Emily, if you have something, you can certainly chime in.
Oh, can you go back to like where the jewelry store is? I just, no, you gotta go to the jewelry store.
This, which one?
The one that just opens. No, the jewelry store.
Jonathan.
Right on the corner. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, you see, I just wanted to bring this up because we're talking about this general area. So if somebody parks, if you, you can kind of see on the picture that there is a spot past the crosswalk to park in. Problem is, is now people are parking really close to the corner that is on John Street. So if somebody has parked there, you already have a limited view of seeing the cars coming towards you from Church Street, like, you know, towards the bridge. But then when somebody parks there, now you can't see the cars coming from the bridge. It's okay if they park past the crosswalk because you can see. And I, I've had this happen twice now already since it's opened. There was the trucks there that were working on it. There, there was like two or three of them parked there and they were parked right, right at the corner. And I could see nothing.
Is there any signage there for restricting parking here and allowing?
It's not a parking spot.
Okay, there's, okay, when you're driving down John Street, no, when you're driving down Church Street, towards the bridge, there's a, a sign that says parking with an arrow, go, go, pointing straight ahead.
Right.
Right? So it's on, right on the corner. So parking, I know that it means past the crosswalk or down a little lot, but other people may not know that. And maybe parking starts there. The other problem is that right in front of um, Whozic Provisions, if you're coming down John Street towards Whozic Provisions, there's a sign that says parking with arrows that go both directions. And what it's meant to say is there's parking down this direction and over in that direction. But what people interpreted it as is
They can park.
They can park there. Exactly.
Deb, can you um, would you be able to meet with Neil and look over signs and come up with a plan on uh, adjusting the signage down there to make it more clear?
Uh, yeah, I met, um, I've been talking to Kevin and, and Bobby about it too, so I had a, I, I wasn't, I was dealing mostly with the um, the parking behind where my shop is, but I can do that too.
All right, thank you.
I was just thinking, if you're doing that area, that really needs to be addressed because with the tractor trailers and, you know, you, you have to be able to see. You already have to pull out over that crosswalk just to see the cars coming down. So then if you're limited on both sides, you're halfway out into the road before you can see.
Right, and some of those trucks don't even slow down. And I'm gonna throw this in there, maybe someplace on John Street, we can put a no U-turn sign because people make U-turns. Yes, I see it every day.
On John Street?
On John Street. They must have a death wish. I don't know. But on John, they make U-turns on John Street and it, you know, one of those tractor trailer comes around the corner and it's all over.
Oy. All right, I know we're like off on a bunch of different things, but they're all kind of related. Um, Jerry, did, did you have anything else you want to say?
Uh, no.
All right.
We can resolve it, that's all.
All right, thank you. And again, Jerry, uh, my apologies for not getting back to you in a timely manner. I'm very sorry about that.
That's not a problem. And I, I won't be, uh, have to pay the penalty for late uh, on the water bill, correct?
That's correct, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, Jim, thank you for your patience. Fire away.
Okay, I'd like to make a statement. I can answer questions afterwards if that's okay. Um, I'm Jim Martinez, partnered with Jimmy Monahan and HF Marmen, and we own the Thor block. That's uh, twenty-four Church Street. Nineteen years ago, we purchased a Thor block. Well, seventeen years ago, we removed a thousand gallon oil tank that was underground and replaced it with a thousand gallon propane tank. We did that after obtaining a permit and arranging for a propane company to install the tank, certainly assuming that it was up to code. So that brings me to why I'm here. It's come to my attention that a Mr. Sauer filed a complaint with his board at the last meeting, ostensibly because he had a sincere concern for the safety and well-being of the community. I guess I should thank Mr. Sauer since it gave me reason to dig deep into the NFPA fifty-eight code, which regulates installation of propane tanks. As you no doubt know, Mr. Sudan, the code enforcer, paid me a visit the day after the last board meeting. He inspected the valve and the fact that it was protected by four ballards, according to code. Now, it's my understanding that Mr. Sauer has expressed a concern as to the possibility that a vehicle may be considered an ignition source. If that is the case, one may believe that a car parked facing the ballards may be within the ten-foot limit prescribed by the code. Now, I don't know if a vehicle is considered an ignition source, but if it is, I suspect the ignition source will be well beyond the ten-foot requirement if we back into the carport. This brings me to my concern. Since we're able to bring complaints directly to the board at a public meeting, I'd like to bring something up that I brought up with code enforcement back when my neighbor installed four one-hundred-and-twenty gallon tanks just over our property line. From what I gather in my review of the NFPA Code fifty-eight, these tanks should be protected by ballards or something similar since they are adjacent to a driveway or parking lot where they could be damaged by motor vehicles. It's also my understanding that the ballards must be no closer to the tanks than three feet. Also my understanding from review of the code, that these tanks must be at least five feet off a, off a property that can be potentially built on in the future. I believe the village also has a five-foot setback requirement also. Now, with that being said, it should also be noted that if a vehicle is considered an ignition source, the same rule applies to tanks under one-hundred-and-twenty-five gallons. They must not be within ten feet of the ignition source. Since we often have vehicles parked within three feet of those above-ground tanks, it certainly would necessitate removal of those tanks or movement to another location. After all, I'm sure Mr. Sauer, if he was aware of those tanks, would agree that they should be moved for the safety and well-being of the surrounding community. This concludes my comments regarding my underground tank and my neighbors' above-ground tanks. As an aside, since we are voicing concerns about the safety of the community, I would like to put the village on notice regarding my neighbor's building ordering John Street. There's an eight-foot plate glass window that is cracked from top to bottom and is broken at the top. If this were to fall toward the street, it could seriously hurt or even kill someone of a small nature. I know Sal Mahoney had to address the same situation on Church Street. I don't know why this would be any different. Thank you. If the board has any questions, I'll answer them. If not, you'll know where to find me.
All right, thank you, Jim. Uh, and of course, uh, we uh, in, in these public meetings, always welcome the comments and we'll follow through on them. That's a lot uh, you had in there. Um, trustees or Andy, any questions? Or Mark, if you want to speak to any of this.
I have a question. If, if the village, this is probably for Andy, but if the village knows about that crack and doesn't take action against the person who has the crack and it falls, who's responsible for it? Are we, is the village liable for any damages? Cause I don't, I wouldn't like to see the village get sued. Does that make sense?
Right, so Deb, that, that's something we can, can look at. Obviously, the comment's been raised uh, regarding a safety issue adjacent to what I would presume to be a public street or sidewalk. Uh, certainly the building department can perform an inspection, but on your issue concerning liability, that's something we could uh, look into.
Thank you, Andy.
So what, what is the next step regarding my concerns um, regarding the tanks not being up to code? Not having, not being the five-foot setback according to the village code? And uh, not, not appear, apparently not adhering to the NFPA fifty-eight code? And that, by not being protected by the ballards and, and the ballards, it should be three feet away from the tanks.
Uh, well, step one is we're gonna review um, the NFPA fifty-eight um, language and we'll have Mark go out and review the uh, location. We'll check back in with Andy, um, and that'll give us an assessment of where we're at and then we'll move from there. Andy, Mark, something you want to add on that?
Uh, you know, I, I, a couple things. Um, I, I, I can't remember when those tanks were initially installed. I do remember Jim had a concern about the tanks. I, I don't remember what my follow-up was on, on those tanks. But I do, uh, when I went back after the last meeting and looked, uh, certainly I have uh, some concerns about those tanks. Um, just been very busy. Uh, I did look at the law some today. Uh, I called local companies to help me out a little bit. He sent me some information late today. Uh, I, I, I definitely think that I need to purchase uh, the NFPA fifty-eight codes to have those. There, there's two different ones for us then, one for inside, one for outside tanks. And so every, every once in a while, you do have to reference them. Uh, so uh, I, I, in the past, I have counted on some of the uh, local companies helping out a little bit and it's, it's worked out okay, but this one, um, this one did slip through the cracks for sure. I went over and looked at those. My concern was with those four tanks and I don't see an issue with that uh, that uh, Mr. Sauer expressed on that at the last meeting. The plate glass window is something I did try and address with the property owner a long time ago and I let it, I let it drop. I, and I did uh, have addressed it with other property owners, the same issue and, and got it taken care of. Uh, it slipped through the cracks. Deb brought it up to the, uh, it was brought up to me recently. Uh, yeah, and that uh, that is a concern. It is on my list. I just haven't gotten to it on my list. But well.
All right, so first off, um, uh, Jim, I'll, I will check in with Mark and Andy uh, on, on Mark's uh, observations on, on your situation. Uh, that was brought up um, by uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Sauer, I think. Um, and I will, uh, once I check in with Andy, I will shoot you an email and get back to you just to confirm where we're at with that. Um, secondly, I'm gonna check in also with Mark and Andy about the situation. Ooh, someone has a very loud sound going on right now, breathing in there.
Could you repeat that, Rob?
Yeah, sorry. Something, uh, just someone's breathing on something. Uh, so secondly, I'm gonna check in with Mark and Andy. We're gonna have to look at um, the, the issue you raised up. Look at the timing of um, when they were installed, timing of when, um, and if uh, those the, and the NFPA fifty-eight that I just started Googling all of a sudden. Um, when those um, latest regulations were done and see if there's any, to basically see where we would go from that, because there's a lot of timing issues, there's a lot of policies we have to figure out, um, and we'll look into that as well.
I think, I think you'll find the code for two thousand, uh, I think Mark had ninety-five, uh, two thousand fifteen, I, I've looked at two thousand eighteen. I think you're gonna find, well, I'll let you wait and see what you find. I, I won't tell you what you're gonna find.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And so what is, what kind of timeframe are you talking about, Rob? Um, you said you're gonna talk with them. Would I hear back before the next meeting or when would I expect, just so I can follow up with you if I don't hear anything?
It would be before the next meeting. Um, I would like to at least on the first item of just reviewing and making sure that, that we're all good with uh, the situation that was brought up and that that's no longer a concern. I'd like to get back to you uh, within a week. If you haven't heard from me by this time next week, um, give a call to um, the village office and check it with Marie, just to, to, just to, to make sure that's on the front burner. Uh, the second one, The second one, I don't know. I'd like to say I would get back to you by next meeting. That could be, and, and you would know this better than I and Mark would as well. It could be a deep dive into various policies and timings and such. So that will take some time to review, especially with everything else that's going on right now.
You mean, there's other things going on?
Nah, nothing. Just another day.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, Jim.
Okay.
Um, anyone else, other people to, to be heard?
Um, I want to talk a little bit about the mural. Should I do that now or later? Because that's village business.
Um, why don't you wait until your trustee committee report, which is coming up shortly?
Okay, okay.
Um, I'll make sure to bring that, make sure that comes up. All right, and now with the lighting, Deb, your silhouette looks fantastic. Okay, last chance. All right, we're going to move on to reports and minutes, treasures reports. I just put a couple of things, there's been a slew of things going on, but I did put in there what we had, what has gotten completed in the past. We get to any questions? I know you guys have reviewed some things as well. Any questions on the sort of baseline trustee report? Or the treasure report, I'm sorry? If not, I will take a motion to approve the treasure report.
Motion.
Uh, I think that was like Bobby and Deb. And Kevin was in there as well, but we'll just give it to Bobby and Deb. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Or abstentions? Carries. Police report, chief, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. I'm, I hope everyone's doing well. I'll make this really quick. Total calls for April were one-hundred-and-twenty-seven. Last month were one-hundred-and-forty-two. Brings the total calls to four-hundred-and-eighty-three for the year. The arrests for the month were for resisting arrest, obstructing governmental administration. There was a warrant arrest. It was contempt of court and also an arrest for an assault on a police officer. Uh, the officer is fined. The subject's been located and placed under arrest and is now in the courts. Um, on April twenty-fourth, we participated in a drug give-back. Over three boxes were filled and transported to DEA headquarters in Latham. That's a lot of drugs that were turned in. The people were extremely happy when they were coming in and doing it. This is a really great program. It's something that we're going to try to do again. I think they'll do it in a couple more months. Um, the other big thing is that Unity House, we had an open house planned for May twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one at eleven AM at the Armory. Um, they've actually changed that date to Thursday, May twenty-seventh at two thousand and twenty-one at eleven AM. I've met with the staff over at the Armory. They're very happy with results of what's going on. We had a Zoom meeting with the staff from the Unity House and they're, they brought in their fundraising people and their publicity people. Um, all the reports that they're getting from up here is that it's going very, very well. And they want to invest more energy, more time, possibly even change some of their hours up here to the afternoon shift. So as that's coming along, we'll, we'll pass that information over to you. The only question I have, Mayor, is that we met, we talked about the parade and you say that there's masks are going to be required. Is that going to be for just the participants? Or are we looking at that in the crowd as well? I'm just bringing it up because that question might come up.
No, that's all right. It's, it's, it's specific to parade participants. Um, obviously, we would encourage and ask for social distancing to be happening. The, the good news is it's outside and as long as people are responsible with outside, you're, you're, you're in, for the most part, good shape. Obviously, you shouldn't be really close to people. So in, you know, in, in supporting this parade, we want to make sure that people understand that we are still, as you're watching, expecting and hoping people to use social distancing. Uh, and if people want to wear masks outside and keep their distance, absolutely, they should be free to do that and free not to be judged. Uh, at the same time, if you're outside and, you know, you're six to ten feet from people, you, you don't need to be wearing a mask as long as you maintain that social distancing according to the science. But in terms of the specifics of the parade, if you are involved in the parade, and then Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to be socially distancing and masking.
Correct. They're just trying to discourage having fifty people on a float or something like that, that they, it's pretty much impossible if you're six feet apart.
I just want to make sure in case, you know, I'm approached during the festivities that, you know, people are standing alongside the road. I, I just want to know, make sure that we're all on the same page. That's all.
All right, thanks, chief. Any questions for chief?
One, one other thing, if I could, we're, we've had a lot of conversation about the parking issues here. And I know Bobby and Neil met today over at the parking lot and I think we came, we came to a resolution there. The resolution on John Street, reference to Cumberland Farms, I, I really think we need to get that addressed and, and dealt with because it's something that keeps on popping up here. And I, I think it's a, something that we should look at and make a decision rather quickly on it.
Chief?
Yes.
Speaking, it's Deb. Speaking of parking, on, on, on John Street, there are people who are parking for more than two hours? And businesses are open? It's?
We're, we're going to address that and start looking at that.
In the old days, they used to like put a chalk mark on the tire and then, I don't know. That's what they used to do.
No, well, well, I think what I'll do is pay a visit to all the businesses there myself and in a friendly way advise them that, you know, if there's people coming into your store, if there's parking going on, don't feel like they can't give us a call if that car is sitting there for a period of time. And, you know, we'll address it along that way. You know, I'd love to put.
Some of the business owners are there all day, except when their store is open.
I, I, I understand that and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be the mean person that's, you know, stepping on businesses. I think that everyone should take responsibility themselves and understand that.
Chief, let me interrupt you for a minute. I will be the mean person here. Please speak with your officers and please encourage them to be checking that on a regular basis, especially now. I know this is a thing that has come up a lot now, but parking has been a huge issue. Uh, it's been brought up every meeting for the past four or five meetings. So I am telling you to speak with your officers and be vigilant and on top of that and push the issue because parking is that much more of an issue right now. So make me the bad guy, but that needs to happen.
Thank you both.
There's a, there's a, there's a nice way we can do it. We'll, we'll be, we'll be the bad people with a smile on our face and we can, I'm sure we can rectify the situation.
Right, and the problem is that some of the business owners themselves are, that they have the ability to, to park in the village parking lot and there's plenty of spaces available during the day. So there's no reason they have, they have to park in front of their own business when they could, to me, that parking spots are for their patrons, not for the, the proprietors.
And I agree.
I agree. I mean, sometimes you have to drop something off, but.
Understood. No, no, right, but the two-hour parking. That's what it's two-hour park. You're right.
And just one more thing, and I don't mean to take up everybody's time and I apologize. It's more of a question toward Andy Gilchrist. I know there was some confusion, Andy. You and I spoke about it on the phone and there may be some committee people that are on right now listening. Just to clarify, the six-month period for the reform board, the committee, that is something that the board is in place. You're just taking six months to research everything and then make a final decision as to extending that, correct?
Right, we did talk about that, chief, and so I went back and looked at my notes. There were a couple of issues raised. One was concerning subpoena power to make people come in at hearings in front of the board. And one other one was just practice and procedure for that board to properly set it up. That was certainly in the report that was adopted by the board and filed with the state. So yes, that, that's, that's back on everyone's desks to review and have a police review committee reviewed and, and formalized with appropriate practices and procedures. Part of this is how to get reviewed with the village's labor council as well, given that there are some issues that potentially impact contracts and things of that nature. So, yes, that's back on our desk and we're looking at that and can more formally establish the police review committee. So chief, thanks for bringing that to my attention.
So technically, the, the committee is, is functioning appropriately at this point in time with the authority that.
Right, my understanding, chief, is the committee was established for the purposes of preparing the report, which included reviewing recommendations for police reform issues. That task has been completed with the adoption of that report. The report recommended the, the creation of the formal police review committee and that's what's being reviewed right now.
Okay, because I just want to state that this committee that's been established is doing an outstanding job. I mean, they are working very closely with me. We have a, a great conversation on, on a daily basis. I know Doug and Trish and Jason and Dave are constantly calling me if, if there's a question that comes up or just some thoughts. And we are going to be forwarding some resumes to them for the upcoming next week on the, for possible hiring. And, you know, their input is greatly appreciated. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with this.
All right, trustees, any other questions? Remember, chief said it was his fault if the meeting goes long, not mine. Chief's fault. Looking for motion to improve the police report.
Motion. Second.
All right, Bobby, I think Emily was ahead of Bob Decker there. Always fun doing these on Zoom. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries. Thank you, chief, very much.
Thank you.
All right, code enforcement, Mark, take it away.
Yeah, right. So you have my report. I don't know if there's anything in addition to that that you want. So thanks, thank you and have a good night.
All right, looking for it now.
So I don't, you know, the, which one to go, I do have a question on, I blew up a bunch of violations today. I started, I have a pretty good list. I got maybe halfway through my list. I'll do more tomorrow, but on the lawns, you know, I gotta give people time. So generally what I do is I send out a notice of violation. I give them ten days to clean it up once. If, you know, we have some properties that have just repeated year after year. And then we hire a couple of different people to, to mow the lawns and we charge it against the property. But one of the questions that just came up was, we're in the, we're in the midst of a tax auction and there's at least two of the properties that I'm aware of so far that are involved in that auction. I'm not sure if the village wants me to pursue that as far as writing up a violation and then uh, hiring somebody to mow the lawns once they don't get mowed. They're already starting to get pretty high. Or if I should back off and let the auction happen, whoever buys them takes care of it.
Mark, what I did in the past is I called the county and the county came up and they did mow it.
Okay.
Because that's.
So if you see any.
It's not until June eighth, right, Mark?
Uh, you know, I, I, as I was making my notes here, I didn't bring that with me. It's still in my office. So I, I don't remember exactly what the date was.
I'm pretty sure it's June eighth.
So, but I can, I can certainly follow up with the county. Kevin, do you remember who you talked to on that?
It might have been Bill Film or, I can't think of his name. Mr. Murphy, maybe?
Well, I can give Bill a call and he can give me directions if it's not him.
So. What, Mark, what is the threshold for actually filing a complaint for that? Is it like a foot of grass or six inches?
Ten inches. So, you know, I mean, it's got to get pretty high before I can, you know, I'm, I'm pushing the envelope on some of them. But, you know, I want to get the process started so that gets the ten days in. By then I know, you know, they'll be up there. The problem we have is, you know, it's a lot more work for the people coming in to mow, you know, by letting us get that, letting the properties get that bad. But I don't, I don't really see where I have much of a choice. I have to write the violation first and I have to give them some time to do it.
Thank you, Mark. I don't have any other better ideas for you.
No, I like, I like the approach that we're taking. I know the process takes time and that's frustrating for people, but, um, you know.
So the other, uh, the eighty-two Elm Street, you know, that's, that's been on the radar for a long time. I just, I, I went back there because I got a complaint that there were some kids in and out of there. Man, I just, we, at one time, we had some caution tape up, but the caution tape's not up anymore. It's fallen down. It's, uh, it's just not a good scenario over there. I would encourage any of the board to go look at that. It's actually the eighty-two Elm Street is the brick house on the left as you're heading uh, west towards, uh, you know, like Fourth Street or Fifth Street, if you're heading that down, down the corner of Fourth Street. Or not. Corner of Third Street.
Mark, I know we had that assigned your report for, seems like years. Who, who is the company that actually owns, what is our hood? Is that a real estate company?
I talked to the guy one time. Uh, after many, many attempts, he finally did call me or I got ahold of him and we, uh, he, he told me he was walking away from it. He wasn't, he didn't have any money. He was, it was a nonprofit and he wasn't doing anything with it. At one time, he had sold it because I, but this, this was many years ago. Well, no, he might, I might be wrong on that. It, it's just, there was somebody that had started rehab on it one time, but not this guy. And he's just let it fall, you know, it's deteriorating. The county has it. It is one of the properties on the auction. So, I mean, waiting till June eighth at this point and then talking to a new owner, whoever buys it, um, you know, they're, they're not going to be able, wouldn't make much sense to spend too much money on it the way, in the shape that it's in, but.
Does that include the brick house in the front of that?
It's the brick house in the barn. It's got a weird property line on it, I think.
Is this the one I'm showing right now?
Yeah, it's, it's not. I mean, it's, it's not good. You need to go look at it, but it's, it's the brick house on, it's on the corner of, I guess it would be Third Street, Elm and Third.
Okay.
It wasn't that great when I grew up there. Hi, Bobby.
So, so what, what is the recommended action that we take? What, what can we do?
At this point, it might just be to see if it sells. It's buyer beware issue because I think I talked to Jim in the water department at one time and maybe Neil. And I think there's a, there was a water, either a water supply or a water, a sewer issue where two houses were tied together and this house, I think, was separated out. And I don't know if it was ever connected or not. So there may be even be an issue with water or sewer connection. Besides the.
Mark. You're, you're absolutely correct because I was in that cellar before when there was a water leak with, with the, with the village.
And that all dates back well before me. So, but the rest.
So if they're, so it's coming up for auction June eighth. There's nothing we can do right now tonight, right? What, if it doesn't sell on June eighth, do we need?
Because I got the complaint and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm making the village aware again that, you know, that barn is, is in very rough shape. We'll see what happens June eighth.
Is it, is it possible to, my concern is, is for kids' safety? And is it possible to put the caution tape or the do not enter tape back up around it? At least just so.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that easy enough.
Is this the property you're talking about here, Mark?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
It's hard to see the barn out back. And actually, from this angle, the barn out back does not look that bad. But when you, when you walk to the back of the barn, it is amazing how, how, it's just. How, how, it's just, it, it's fallen into the center. And then back is falling, falling into the front. It's, but you can't tell it from this angle. When you see the barn back there, it doesn't look like it, but it is bad.
Andy, we have pursued situations where unsafe properties need to be pulled down. I know it's a long, like two to three month process. Is that something that we could pursue, start, start pursuing officially regardless of the fact that there's an auction on the 8th?
So I'll step through real quickly that process again, which is, once a building has been identified as being potentially unsafe, your local law requires that a report be prepared and presented to the board. The report can either recommend that the property be stabilized or if from a stability perspective, it's beyond that, it needs to be demolished. If the board concurs based on certainly the recommendation and input from the building department, it would adopt an order requiring the property owner to either stabilize or demolish and you set a public hearing. Once the public hearing is held, the property owner can, can come in with some kind of plan to stabilize or demolish, or if the property owner fails to do anything, then the village can move forward and take the building down. It's a substantial upfront cost. And then the village would charge the property owner with payment for the demolition costs and the associated fees for any kind of engineering work that's been done on it. Legal work in terms of filing notices at the county clerk's office. And if the property owner fails to pay that bill, then there's the ability to re levy that against the real property. Of course, the complicating factor here is that the county has apparently taken title and it's going to auction in early June. If a purchaser of that property wants to undertake that work and redevelop the property, that's wonderful. But if that doesn't happen and the property remains in the opinion of the building department to, to present an unsafe situation, then that's the process it goes through. And Rob, you're correct. It's a process that takes minimally two to three months. Then bidding out the demolition services, going through the asbestos compliance issues and taking the building down. It, it's a process that in point of fact takes several months.
Andy, what if the owner is the county when you do that process?
Well, and that's the very issue. Right now, the county is the property owner. And if, let's presume for the moment that it goes to auction, but it's not sold. The county is in fact the fee owner. And if the village determines based on you know, the record, you know, structural inspection, engineering recommendation that is unsafe and needs to be demolished, that falls on the county.
It's a good way to make friends, what you're saying.
Well,
It's what it is.
Listen, for, for the board's information, that's exactly the issue that we're trying to deal with, with 115 Maine.
Yes.
Is if the county were to proceed and take title to that property through the tax foreclosure process and it's determined that the building does need to come down, then that would fall as an expense on the county. And what we're trying to do is address that issue through the acquisition program under the Woods Book Grant. That would potentially free up state funds to demolish the building. But Kevin, there's no exemption for the county. If the county takes title to the property on which an unsafe structure sits and it needs to be demolished, that's a property owner responsibility and that would include the county.
Thank you, Andy, on that. So trustees, if we went through with that, you had said, Andy, that a report would need to be made. I'm assuming that would be from like a certified engineer or something like that.
That's the process you did on the earlier properties that were demolished within the last couple of years. You bring in an engineer to actually perform that inspection, prepare a report that's reviewed by Mark's office. Mark submits all of this to the, to the board for review with Mark's recommendation.
So we would need a report presented to the board. And then the board would order it and set a public hearing for likely the next meeting. And then if nothing happened, the following meeting, it would be, the board could, could force the action, correct?
That's correct. And at that point, it then goes out for bid and bids have to be received for demolition costs. The bid has to be awarded. There has to be appropriate coordination with the Department of Labor on the asbestos issue, pre-demolition. And then the work can get scheduled. So, you know, that initial, you know, as you say, two to three month process turns into a four to five month process, just coordinating with Department of Labor and the bidding process to get a demolition contractor in.
Yeah, the American House was, I think there was a grant involved in the cost of getting that taken care of.
But it still took a long time.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I definitely recommend that we, that we move forward with it because our experience has been these county sales, we're having people that who are buying these properties sight unseen because they get them cheap. And then when they go and see what they bought, they just turn around, walk away from it again. And it goes back through the whole process, another three year process. And so I, I would recommend that we begin the process moving forward. Somebody buys it and they want to tear it down and do what they need to be done, that'd be great, but.
Mark, is this the property that you're most concerned of in the village right now?
I'm concerned with the kids getting in there. Yeah, this, this property is not safe at all.
That's good enough for me, trustees.
I agree with Mark.
I agree.
I agree.
Hundred percent.
Kevin?
I like what the city of Troy does. They take proposals for properties that are in foreclosure. And they have, people have to come up with ideas of what they're going to do with the property. And then they're, they make bids on the property. It's much less than what the county would normally get, or the city would normally get. But at least they're putting in people's hands that really want to do something with the property and make it a better site in their city.
Is there anything that prevents us from doing that, Andy?
We've probably passed that point on this one, but maybe for other properties.
Well, that would have to be the counties.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Kevin's correct. That, that's what the city does, but that's not the procedure the county takes.
So Andy, we would need a motion to authorize the code enforcement department to pursue a report on this, on on declaring the structures unsafe, correct?
Correct. And the motion would include authorization to retain an engineering consultant to coordinate with Mark's office to do the structural inspection and prepare a report on structural safety.
Trustees, looking for a motion if you're, I want to go this direction. I'm going to give that to Emily because I heard her a little bit less laggy than Bob. Second? I gotta give that one to Bob now. All right, any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay, passes, Mark. We are looking to hear on that. And so I guess my next question is, do we want to have the report done by the 8th, which may also be the county auction dates? I think we still go ahead with it, right? We don't wait for the auction?
I think too, Mark, you should notify the county of the condition of that property before the auction. I know he told me in the past, if we had any issues with property, just to let them know.
Okay, I, yeah, I'll do that. Same time I reach out to him on the lawn, the lawn there.
And Mark, if I could, when you get an engineer lined up, getting access to the property, we want to make sure all the steps are legally taken. So reach out to the property owner if possible to get access and consent to get on the property with our consulting engineer. If you have a problem with that, get ahold of me. We'll deal with that.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Mark?
Uh, I don't, I don't know if you want to go into 48 and 54 Classic Street. I just, I updated the pictures. It was about a year ago. I took pictures. Definitely 48 has gotten worse. You know, you saw the reply. I included the county or the state engineer, Mr. Buckner. And he replied, the state obviously is not going to do anything. So you know, we, same thing, that I'm not as concerned with the 54, but if anybody wants to go and look at that from the backside, I did talk to Neil when I was, after I got out of there the other day. You know, it's a little overgrown down in there. And I asked him if it would be possible to have one of the guys maybe go in and make a path so we can get in and out of there a little bit easier. You know, to, for inspection purposes. And he, he said he would send one of the guys over there at some point. When they have some time, maybe at least make us a path that we can get in and out of there.
Mark, when I, I had Delaware engineering in town looking at the sidewalk issues with the ADA compliance part. Robert Flores's engineer did look at the property and took pictures. So maybe Robert Flores and his engineer can give us a little more retrospective, what's happening there.
Oh my, I'm looking at those pictures. If you guys haven't looked at those pictures. Mark, if we haven't moved on something on this by next week, let me get through this week with the, the water meeting, but this, this needs to be a front burner thing. That is, that is scary.
I would encourage anybody to go look at that, especially from down, you can't see it as well from up top, but you can see part of it. But from down below, you can see how much that sidewalk is actually undermined.
If anybody can't shoot, can't read those pictures, so they're zip filed, just shoot me an email and I'll, I'll send them back out to you. That's
I've been down to check it out, Mark. It's definitely needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
Yeah.
So if Neil's going to send somebody, this is, well, whatever. If Neil's going to send somebody down to dig a path, maybe he should send two people if it's that dangerous.
Oh, no, it's not. Yeah, though, I'm just saying clean a path to get to it where the brush is, it's just so
Oh, okay.
thrown in. It's hard to get to it. See.
Okay.
And you need to go up next, as you go up in, you need to go, you gotta get up a level because the way it drops off, so you have to walk in next to the Bistro Building and get up to closer to the street and you'll see it, kind of the upper half of the lot. So if anybody does go up in there.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve the code enforcement report.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Bobby, for waiting on there for the second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's, thank you. And thank you, Mark. Definitely moving on that. Clerk, deputy clerk, anything, Marie, you want to highlight?
Nothing much really. Same thing, the utility payments been coming in. Yesterday was the last day before penalties, so we fired her today. We'll open the windows up tomorrow and see what happens. We do need that front door unlocked for us tomorrow, so to be sure that we can let people in.
Chief, did you, did you hear that?
You might have lost them.
Okay.
I think Neil can also do it for me, so the two of them will get it open.
I think Chief has to be the one to reprogram the door. So I'll, I'll bring that up with Chief and someone's got some extra noise going on in the background. So just keep an eye on mute. All right, looking for a motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk report.
I got that one, Rob.
All right, Bob Decker got it. And a second?
Second.
I'm coming.
All right. Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Or abstentions? Carrie's, thank you. Highway departments, Bobby, anything you want to highlight?
Uh, no, not really. You already touched base on the, as far as the street sweeping. So no, there's really nothing. Neil, they've been working on the St. Mary's Fountain to get that going for Memorial Day as well. And doing mowing, trying to keep the park, get the park ready for Memorial Day and doing painting benches. So mostly just tidying up around the village.
Speaking of benches, is it possible when we get the new, the new Walter Ray Wood benches, if there are some leftover benches that aren't collapsing, if we could put a couple of them down by Haka? Because they have their, because of COVID and all that, they have their clients waiting outside that could have a place to sit. If they're just going to be hanging around anyway. You know, I mean, if the benches aren't going.
Andy, do we have any procedures about giving things to local nonprofits?
Uh, Rob, I'll take a look at that. There's general rules about gifting village owned property, but I'm going to put that on the list. We'll, we'll take a look.
Thank you.
It's a good cause.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, looking for a motion in a second for approval for the highway report.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Emily and Deb. All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's, thank you. All right, sewer report. Anything you guys want to highlight, Kevin, Craig? Kind of a bunch of the same old, same old.
No, not really.
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Emily. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's. Water reports, Emily?
You already touched base on the GAC being changed out and you already touched base on the hydrant flushing. So other than that, I have heard nothing.
All right. Unless there's any questions for Emily, I'll take that motion in a second to approve the water report.
A motion.
Motion. Second.
All right, thank you, Bob Decker and Craig. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's, we have a whole slew of minutes from the last month as we have been busy. Were there any comments or changes needed for the regular meeting minutes on April 20th? If not, I will take a motion to approve those in a second.
Motion to approve.
Marie, whoever you want to give that to, go for it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, that one is approved. Let's go to the next one, which was the April 29th special meeting. I had one note, that we just had ARPA spelled wrong. It's A R P A on that one. Instead of A R A P, the acronym letters are wrong. So that will just need to be changed. It's a simple thing, not a big deal. Anything else on that one? If not, I'll take a motion to approve that in a second with the one change mentioned so far.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll give that to Deb because she did it twice for a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Did we, oh, did we have a separate one for the April 20th organizational? We did, right?
Yes, we did.
Any, any questions or changes on that? And I'll take the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
No.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Emily. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? None. And did we have one for the May 6th, which was the one where we literally just went into executive session ended?
Yes, I sent that out today.
Sorry, there were, I think we literally received like 40 emails today, Marie. Any issues on that one? Yeah. If not, I will take a motion to approve that one as well.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Craig?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Carrie's, trustee reports. Deb, I'm going to jump right to you because you are the mirror you want to talk about.
Yes, so Katie May wants to start in May. And we've, I don't have a, she's still, I still don't have a finished sketch to show you, but it's changed quite a bit since the last time it was, anybody saw it.
When does she want to start, you said?
May, the, later in the month. I believe we have all the permissions for it. I think we have, we gave, we budgeted $800 for her and Kevin, $200 for the paints and stuff.
Yeah, I think we need to ask for that. This is coming out of economic development money.
Okay. So can we have $800, uh, $200 for paints and supplies? She may need actually more than that, but.
Well, I would. can we get a specific estimate from her and what she's, she's thinking she's going to need? And I think that because this is, um, we've had, um, some discussion, uh, about this. I would like to see if we could see a, um, uh, a, a, a sort of a draft version of the final copy. Do we have that? Okay, I, I, I know I hate to ask it because I know she's doing something that serves for the community, but I also know that, um, people have spoken up on it. Um, and had some concerns. So I think it, uh, it is just sort of our due diligence to get that level of, uh,
Okay, it's, um, I, I will say that I, I Googled and looked everywhere and asked people who I thought would know if using the owl was cultural appropriation, which would be the problem that I would have with it if it was, and I could not find that anywhere.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an issue.
Um, but if anybody has any other information, you can let me know. Um, that one person threatened to call Walgreens and all kinds of stuff and, um, hopefully, you know, I talked to her and I said, there will be other murals. There will be other artists. We will have more opportunities. So, and I think this one's been in the works. Kevin busted his, you know what, to get
Oh, yeah.
to get it this far. And I just, the, the drawing that I've seen so far is beautiful and people will be able to stand in front of it and send pictures to everybody on Instagram and Facebook that says Who's It Falls. And, um, I've looked at her, her webpage and she does a variety of different styles and they are all excellent. She takes pride in her work and it's, it's going to be gorgeous. So, but I will get you a sketch.
So Andy, is this something we would need to, um, approve or how do we, how do we do the subject to approval thing on this?
For public art?
Right, were these funds that were earmarked in your budget?
They were, they were out of economic development money, but the, since I was involved with it, it's changed a lot where there's more color involved and, um, the price increased from $800 to $1,000. I, I think we verbally agreed to it back, uh, four or five months ago, not officially, but we agreed to spend the month, the eight hundred hours anyway.
Uh, Rob, I think it'd be appropriate based on this discussion, if you authorize the expenditure of funds from the economic development, funds probably in an amount right now not to exceed. And if additional funds were needed later on because of cost of materials, that could be addressed, but uh, given the timing, we just heard about wanting to get started before your next regular meeting, maybe authorize expenditure of funds uh, not to exceed, no, subject to the review by the board members of the, of the sketch.
Can we, can we, um, can we, can we do the sketch shared via email among us or do we need to make it public?
No, no.
The whole world?
Th- this is, the determination to expend the money is one vested in the trustees and the mayor and deputy mayor. So, and if you want to see the sketch before the funds are actually, um, used, that's fine. You can include that just to review it amongst yourselves. Uh, this is a determination by the trustees. What you'd be doing tonight is just authorizing the expenditure of the money up to a certain amount.
Okay, but because we had questions from people in the community, we don't need to post it on Facebook and get feedback from a million people and.
Well, that, that's, that's certainly within discretion of the trustees. If you want to go that route, if you want to, you know, what amounts to publish the proposed sketch and, and take public input on that. That's within your discretion. You can choose to do that. Sounds like it would delay the project a little bit, but you certainly within your discretion to do that.
What do you guys think?
I like this idea a lot more when we were just buying paint and not commissioning art.
But you have to do something with the paint, Craig.
Well put, Craig.
Some, somebody will. It's not us.
Well.
I'm not in favor of putting it out for any more public comment. I think we need to move forward. We agreed to, do it. We put the money in the budget. I think we should just move forward.
I agree.
I agree with Bobby.
I also agree with Bobby.
It looks, it looks so much better than it did. I mean, I thought it looked fine the way it was, but, uh, Deb worked with the artist and it looks a hundred percent better than it did when I was involved.
Well, that was just a preliminary sketch, what you saw. And then she's, and I've talked to her about some other things too, like she has Who's It Falls on the bottom. And I, I think it'd be better on the top because then you'll see it when people stand in front of it, the other picture taken. And we become world famous, you know, goes viral and everybody comes to Who's It Falls and, you know, all that stuff. And they'll have good places to park. It's going to be great.
All right. Uh, so it looks like, uh, we're all in favor of moving forward with this and we are looking to entertain a motion to, um, Andy, what is it up to a thousand dollars? Set us, use, uh,
Based on the discussion, it sounds like it would be a motion authorizing expenditures in an amount not to exceed a thousand dollars on the mural project, both for materials as well as artwork. Um, and including that motion that the current sketch will be circulated amongst the trustee members before any work's undertaken.
Do we have it so moved?
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right. Hearing none. We are moving forward with that. Deb, anything else?
Um, I just have a question. Another Haka question. Um, Diane Posterman, who runs it, they, there's an older gentleman who takes all the cardboard away. Um, and he does something with it at his farm or whatever he does. He's a volunteer. And he's been ill and they, they have no way to have their, their trash and they're recycling all the cardboard boxes that all the stuff for the pantry comes in. And is it possible for, I don't know, I have no idea how this works.
We have run into a similar issue when the Channing Library, another nonprofit who we like to support in the community, was, um, asking if we would, um, do the, do a little bit of additional plowing. Now they have the parking lot and the unfortunate answer we had to say was no. Because if we offer that for one, we have to offer for everyone, no matter how great of a, of a help they are to the community. So unfortunately, I don't think we could do that unless there was a way we would.
Rob, can I interject here?
Yeah, please, Marie.
I spoke to Diane this week, um, earlier in the week, and we went back and forth with a couple of different ideas. They are, um, now going to be getting cans through county waste, um, that they will have down at the, um, Haka building and they'll put out, um, on the curb.
Oh, good.
Just like everyone else. So she is aware of the quarterly amount, which is charged to everyone. And, you know, unfortunately, the village is not in the position to waive that for the nonprofit, but she was happy with that at the end of our conversation.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Okay.
Anything else, Deb?
No, that was it.
All right, uh, Bobby Ryan, anything?
I think that was it.
No, I don't have anything other than I talked to, I met with Neil regarding the signs in the village parking lot. And I'll, once I, I'll generate email to everyone, what we propose to keep the two hour parking or to put two hour parking in the 12 spots that are directly, um, out, outside of the tri-state credit union. And then we'll, all the perimeter will maintain 24 hour parking. And the other 12 spots will also be 24 hour parking, but with the time limitations that are already posted there. And Neil has signs in stock that state two hour parking from nine AM to six PM for those locations that go around the existing post. So I think we have the issue pretty well resolved.
Okay, that's great.
So I don't know if anyone has, um, anything else, uh, about that, Kevin. You know, you and I and Deb met last night there and and, uh, I think Neil was on this, on, you know, on board with our ideas. So that's fine. So he should be good.
All right, sounds like we're moving on that. That's great. Thank you, Bobby and Kevin and Deb. Kevin, anything?
Um, just got some information which I had, uh, requested from Robert Flores about the ADA, uh, compliance sidewalk issue that we have. It's, uh, it's getting worse and worse. And I've been contacting state leaders, uh, Senator Daphne Jordan's office, uh, agreed to look at it and they wanted more information and Robert Flores provided that and I immediately sent it off to their office today.
That's great, Kevin.
And also the, uh, Walter Wood project is complete now. We have 23 benches with Walter tractor seats on them. And they'll be put around various locations around the village.
That's awesome.
All by donations. So it was a, it was a good project. And then also the, uh, artists or the fabricators that design the benches, they also are Who's It Falls residents. So it was nice for that, that to happen as well.
That is terrific. Um, Kevin, when do you think those are going up?
Well, we only, our goal was 15. We ended up with 23, so it's going to take some time to make them. They're just getting done with the first five now and we'll be moving on to the rest shortly.
Hey, when we get a few of them up, can we have, um, can we have them come to a meeting so we can show off their handiwork and, um, thank them?
Sure. Yeah, they're, they're, they're very nice people. They've lived here, uh, for a couple of years now and, uh, their hope is to move their studio here in Who's It Falls, where currently it's in North Adams.
All right. Awesome. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Um, Bob Decker, anything?
Yeah, I've, uh, the budget, the actuals from June to April have come out and I've spent quite a bit of time with Denise going over it, getting familiar with everything. Obviously with one month left, it'd be speculation, but, uh, nothing to be discouraged about with the general fund or water. But like Denise said, way too much out there, way too many monies out there to give any report on sewer or any of it really. I mean, but nothing to be discouraged about really.
That's great. Great. And thank you for, uh, diving in and, uh, and, and getting, uh, right into the deep end on all of that stuff. That's really good. And it's going to pay off for us. So thank you.
Denise was real, real good, uh, for this village. I'll tell you that.
Don't have to tell any of us that. We know and then some. Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Thanks, Bob. Emily, anything?
No.
All right. And Craig?
I'll theme tonight, Rob.
All right. Thank you. Uh, old business. We have the same transfer station, uh, request that I have, uh, not yet done anything on. So at this point we are planning to get things squared away for the great year of 2022. Um, but I'm looking for a motion to, uh, table this. Again.
Motion.
I, I heard the motion in the background, whoever that young child was. Well done. Future government leader there. Bob, thank you for the second. Further discussion? All in favor of tabling it? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I love the extra vote. I love it. All right. Um, I think I just missed something. Uh, there was supposed to be, oh, I don't have it in, on my, uh, my PowerPoint, but we were supposed to have discussion regarding your requested adjustment to water bill trustees. I did, um, send you, it's, uh, this is the, the, the third attachment, attachment number three, which was just a quick email recap of the situation, which, uh, everyone in the office wants, um, to be resolved and done with. Um, let me bring that up. Any questions on that for Marie? I'm not sure if Denise is still on, but I'm sure either will be the answer it. All right. So I'm not hearing any. So I think we are looking, Marie, remind me for a motion to
Yeah, we just need a motion to adjust the, the water bill.
When we're adjusting the water bill because they ended up paying, there was an accidental charge. There was an error in how we billed it, correct?
Yeah, Denise sent that all out. I don't have it in front of me. Sadly, that is back in my desk. We had to take off the, um, there was a fine put on there in error.
That's what it was. Yes. And there was also an adjustment specific to, um, the usage, because when we don't have a meter, we, there's a, a default usage that goes on. So this in terms of adjustment falls under the category of, um, a billing error. Uh, let's see here, the $300. So, and Marie, um, can you check that email? I have to, I'm not exactly sure, um, what we are specifically supposed to be, um, requesting the adjustment of, if it's just for the 25529?
Yeah, the adjustment, um, Denise sent over the adjusted amounts from the water, the water bonds and the sewer bond stayed the same. So the water would be $56.10. The water bond was $72.69. The sewer would be $54.60 and the sewer bond was 72.67. The bill total would be 25606 versus what was on the bill of $863.11.
So what's the, what's the total adjustment then on that?
The total adjustment would be the 868. I'm not, I'm not the treasurer, but I'll do my best at this point. So the total adjustment is $614 and five cents.
Got it. Okay, I found it. Thank you. So the original bill was 86311. Um, the, the correct charge should be 25606. So we're looking for a motion to adjust, uh, the payment due to a billing error to be $256.06 from the original 86311. There we go. Need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion, Rob.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Um, further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstentions? All right, carries. Great. Okay, uh, new business. We've actually done a couple of these, but first off, we are going to bring up the local law number one of 2021. This is a, a local law establishing rules and regulations for the keeping of chickens in the village of Who's It Falls. Let me quickly, um, share up the file. And as I do this, uh, a quick reminder that we have been, uh, through this process, we proposed a, uh, law originally. Um, we got, uh, had a public hearing, uh, we did, uh, the comments, uh, received comments on it. This is not the share I'm trying to do. Um, went back to the drawing board, um, and, uh, have restructured it. So the original law was never moved on or passed. This is a new version. Uh, so in a sense, even though we're continuing the process, that we also have to consider, uh, that we are starting fresh. Um, and, um, we would have to go through the intro, someone would need to introduce it, set a public hearing and so on. Andy, how did I do on that summarizing?
Precedurally, you're correct.
Summarizing or stammering, whichever one you want to call that.
It was summarized very, very well. And it's just, uh, similar to the earlier action on introductory local law two. This would need to be introduced, uh, by a trustee, a mayor or deputy mayor. And then a public hearing set. Rob was correct. This, this has been previously introduced in 2020, was subject to public hearing, receipt of comments, comments from board members. Um, the, the board did not move forward and act on it. It's, it has been revised in light of the comments received. And the reintroduction of this as introductory local law one of 2021 is before you tonight.
Uh, what I want to do as soon as I find the file is, um, highlights, uh, some of the modifications that were made to it, uh, from the previous version. Uh, I'm bringing this up right now. Um, and these are changes that, um, Mark, um, as code enforcement officer myself were good with. Um, I'm just going to quickly scan through this. One modification we made was right here in the first section. Um, we specified, uh, within the village and moved away from the zoning approach that we had taken prior. Um, we added language about We added language about setback right here, which was not in the first iteration. The definitions are unchanged from the previous version. We modified this portion right here in the regulation in the initial part of section three to specify any property within the village. As opposed to again, what we had done previously was sort of a zoning specific approach. And of course, it ties into section four. One modification here. Just for language specifying the primary structure. As opposed to a residence. Section four. Part C, we tightened up some language here and specified in particular, the word only chickens may only be kept on lots that meet the following criteria. And that has remained unchanged. And that is, in a sense, what we did with this local law. So again, this is very similar to what the original group of, let's see here, Bobby, you were there, Vanessa, myself, Jason von Guinness. I think Sarah was there. Someone else was there.
Sarah was there for sure. Yes.
We we reviewed a bunch of local municipality laws that were provided to us wonderfully again by Andy. Came with the previous chicken local law, and now we are ready to introduce a slightly refined one with the most recent comments. Andy, anything else you want to mention or summarize there?
Sure. The predominant edit, as Rob said, was to move away from a zoning district approach. The prior version really limited the keeping of chickens within the residential districts in the village. Many of the comments were, but some of the properties that sought to have chickens were not placed in the residential districts. But what would meet the criteria otherwise? So this change really does open up the entire village to the keeping of chickens as long as the criteria are met. Regardless of zoning district. So it's rather than focusing on the specific zoning district, it now focuses on the appropriate setbacks. The lot size and the other specifications that are principally in section three. And then the the change down in section four, again, under letter C. It previously stated that chickens could only be kept on lots located in the R1, 2, and 3 zones. It's now been changed to say on lots that meet the following criteria. The criteria haven't changed. But it's not going to be limited in under this proposed local law to the residential districts. It's anywhere within the village that does meet the the lot size setback and the other criteria.
And in terms of comments, one of the other comments was bringing other animals into this as possibilities. And I did not want to do that at this point. I wanted to stay specific to just chickens. And that is what this law will address. So trustees, any questions?
Wasn't there something that we talked about about landlords giving their tenants permission to have chickens? Were we taking that out or?
You just you just went past something, Rob. It said said something about the landlord occupied.
Right, that that's down, Rob, in section four C.
Thank you.
Yep, if you continue it over on the there it is. So chickens kept on lots meeting the following criteria, either an owner occupied, single family residence, which didn't raise many comments. Two, a rented, single family property with the written permission from the property owner. Or a multi-family unit with one unit being owner occupied. I can recall Kevin strike that Bobby's comments were the absentee owner, not really caring about. Yeah, and and this is a multi-family unit as long as one of the units is owner occupied.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, that's right. Yep.
And here, because it's multi-family units, it's written permission from the other unit owners as well, or unit occupiers.
Thank you. Very good.
Yep. Awesome. Unless you have any other questions, we need someone to formally introduce the law, law number one.
I will make that motion.
All right, Bobby has set himself up to be the person who will get all of the ire for anyone who doesn't like this. I'm just kidding, Bobby. So Bobby has introduced this. We don't need a second yet. So we will set a public hearing. And as we discussed about the previous local law with the local law on June 8th, our next regular meeting, local law number two. The public hearing was at 6:30. It would make sense for us to schedule this public hearing at 6:00 PM. So if that's good with you guys, I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing for local law number one for June 8th at 6:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Bobby and Deb, I think. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay, and remember that was Bobby Ryan. All all criticisms go to Bobby Ryan. Just kidding.
Thanks, Rob. Much greatly appreciated.
Just say it was the other Rob. You had so many of them.
There you go. I like that approach. I like that approach. You can tell the meeting has gotten past the 2.5 hour mark. The good news is we've done most of the rest of the stuff here. So let's move through this. We already did local law number two. That was tied to one of our presentations. So we've already moved on that. See here, solid waste collection transportation. We had, I think it was the special meeting to make sure that our bids could go out and be received on time. We moved on that. Everything worked. The bids were opened yesterday. We had two bids returned and trustees. I simplified this in an attachment. I think it was document number six. In what I emailed you earlier, we had two responses. I'm trying to bring up the exact numbers. So bear with me as I go through all of my insane amounts of documents here. Bid results. County Waste, our current provider, returned their bid at $260,904. This is the total contract price for two years. The only other response was from Casella for the same two-year contract. Their bid was $511,113.
That's insane.
For those of you keeping track at home, that is almost exactly two times higher than the bid for county waste. Ironically enough, after Denise crunched the numbers, this bid will reduce the current cost that we pay monthly for trash and recycling pickup and transfer. So that is also good news, and this will be a two-year contract as well. So and we also, as Craig asked, wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence to make sure everything was good and everything was followed and no issues. And everything has checked out for a review. So at this point, unless there is discussion, I will entertain a motion to award the contract to whoever the board chooses.
That's a tough one, Rob. I county waste.
So so Kevin, you want to put a motion for a award in county waste? Okay.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of awarding the contract to county waste?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to mention one thing about the garbage. One of the reasons that sometimes they have to come back on a weekend is because the truck fills up and they have to bring it back and dump it and have to come back with a separate truck the next day. A lot of people are putting C and D in their garbage bins instead of household garbage. So it wasn't meant for C and D. And it's causing the trucks to fill up and having to make another trip the next day. So I hope people realize what they're actually made for. They're only made for household garbage, not all kinds of, I see brooms sticking out of the waste cans and all kinds of other stuff some days.
You know what? People on Facebook, I forget what I was reading. It was like a lot, a couple of long threads. On one of the sites, people complaining about them not coming on the day they're supposed to and stuff like that. So maybe we could put out a statement or something on the website or on Facebook or something saying, telling them, telling people what to put in their trash. And when you don't put the right things in, that's when it gets messed, the timing gets messed up.
Yeah, and I think that in some lately, I've seen that they've left the stuff behind where in some cases I've seen them take stuff. But it certainly doesn't help throwing all that junk in there.
All makes sense.
People don't know that that's why the why they come late.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I will also say that if someone gets missed and they reach out to the village office and the village office reaches out to them, they are very good about going back and getting that picked up. So please do that if you need to. All right, landfill. Andy, can you summarize where we're at? And I'll bring up the resolution.
Well, I can. I think Dave may still be on the call.
Lucky guy.
So he can supplement. As the board will recall. Last October. There was a resolution authorizing work to be done on the Leche Collection Pump System. That was awarded. The work was done while that work was being done. It was discovered additional work was necessary. It did increase the overall cost of that work to the extent where the the board did entertain and adopt a resolution to finance that work through a bond resolution that was adopted recently. That bond resolution was subject to a 20-day estoppel period, which is nearly run. And what's in front of you tonight would be a resolution to authorize that additional work to proceed through the village's contractor, Lobella Associates. They were the special contractor brought in under the prior work. Recall because this is a identified as a hazardous waste site by by DEC. There are certain qualifications and specialties associated with being able to do this work. We also have Sterling Environmental having prepared a prior interim remedial measure work plan for that work and is overseeing the review of the additional work that's been necessitated. So what's in front of you, just to to keep that work proceeding under DEC requirements? Would be to award that contract and allow Lobella work to proceed. Following the expiration of the 20-day period, which would allow the village to move forward with its financing. Lobella did present a proposal dated February 9th, 2021. It's been reviewed by Sterling. And Sterling certainly does recommend that the board authorize that work to proceed. In fact, there'll be some additional Sterling work associated with this, including oversight and inspection of the work performed by Lobella and preparing the necessary reports into DEC. So that's what's in front of you tonight is to actually authorize the work to proceed, which has been previously discussed by the board and anticipated through your bond resolution. Dave, if you're still on, have I missed anything?
No, I think you've covered it. We are, as I've previously reported, we've been getting some pressure from DEC to get this thing going. So you know, our hope is is that this can proceed now and we can move on to other issues regarding the landfill. That's it.
All right, let me read Andy's summarize all the statements. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesk Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees hereby awards a contract to Lobella Associates DPC for the scope of services and fees as set forth in the proposal prepared by Lobella Associates DPC dated February 9, 2021, and further authorizes Lobella Associates to proceed with the completion of such the work as set forth in paragraph three below. Two, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Sterling Environmental Engineering PC to proceed with the work and services as set forth in the Sterling correspondence dated March 4, 2021, including the oversight and inspection of work performed by Lobella Associates DPC as described above, and to further provide required reporting to New York State DEC in connection with such work. And three, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Lobella Associates DPC to proceed with the completion of the work described above, following the expiration of the estoppel period under the bond resolution as described above, and further upon the filing or maintenance of the necessary insurance certificate certificates with the Village of Huesk Falls as set forth in the IRM work plan as described above. Need someone to offer the resolution and second it.
I'll offer.
Thank you, Bob Decker.
Second.
Second, I think that was Emily. Any discussion on this or any questions on this? And I know some of this has happened after a change of guard. So if you're, you know, if you need to abstain, that's all right. If you want to abstain or if you're good with it or whatever, that's fine. We do need a roll call vote. So Marie, take it away, please.
Rusty Pine?
Yes.
Rusty O'Malley?
Yes.
Rusty Alter? Yes.
Rusty Decker?
Yes.
Rusty Murphy? Yes.
Mary Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mary Ryan.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Andy, for that great summary. All right, last few items. We have already done the Woods Book Review and we already did the resolution. So that is complete. We come now to the resolution, continuing the retention of David Engel as Environmental Counsel on PFOY Contamination Related Matters. Andy, let me bring up the resolution and you can also wax poetic.
Well, I'm not sure about waxing poetic, but this this was discussed with the board members, noting that Dave Engel has been providing services to the village as outside environmental counsel. When that initial retention happened in June of 2017. He was in an of council position with the firm of Nolan and Heller, now known as Nolan Heller and Kaufman. He has terminated that of council relationship with Nolan Heller and Kaufman and has now, as of April 1, become of council to my law firm, Gilchrist Tingley. And this resolution would seek to continue to use Dave Engel and continue its retention of Dave Engel for environmental law services. It is capacity now as of counsel to the Gilchrist Tingley Law Firm on the same terms and conditions as previously included in the Nolan Helen, in the Nolan and Heller retainer. And this resolution would approve the new retainer agreement with Dave Engel through my office. Again, on the same terms and conditions as the prior Nolan Heller engagement and authorize the mayor to execute that. And again, I know Dave is on the meeting and if any trustees or certainly the mayor or deputy mayor have any questions regarding the resolution or the terms and conditions of the proposed retainer agreement for available to address that.
Let me finish off the now therefore be resolved part. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesk Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the retainer agreement for the continuation of environmental law services as described above by attorney David A. Engel in his position of as of counsel to the law firm of Gilchrist Tingley PC and forming content attached here too. And hereby further authorizes the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the Village of Huesk Falls. So first I need someone to offer and second the resolution. Think that was Emily. Bob Decker, you want a second?
I will.
All right. Any discussion or questions?
No, my only question was, Dave, does your former law firm have any claim against any future lawsuits with the village? Or awards?
Well, we we have a, excuse me. In the interest of full disclosure, I've been sitting here eating spaghetti while this has been going on. I could only wait so long to eat. We have a contention fee arrangement on the claims against San Cobain and Honeywell. And of course, as you know, we've We have a contention fee arrangement on the claims against Sancho Bane and Honeywell. And of course, as you know, we've had a series of interim agreements. In the event, and I expect there will be further recoveries, we have a, essentially a fee split arrangement that would, would be in operation as in between the two law firms. This frankly is of, won't have any impact on the village side. And we, we've come to an understanding between the firms as to how that will be, let's say divvied up. It's basically proportional to the amount of time we had in at each firm. And since most of the time in at the old firm was my time, this is largely an accounting exercise and nothing more. I, I think I've explained that correctly. You want to add anything, Andy?
No, you explained that correctly. Get, in the event of any future recovery, that whatever the fee amount is would be paid to my office. And then through a separate written agreement between the firms, that, that fee split occurs as in between the firms, no, no impact on the village.
Very good. Thank you, Dave, and you're going to agree firm.
Agreed.
I, I'm very happy with the change and I like my new office where I can look out over the river and see the boats go by.
Very nice.
You can always take me to lunch, too. I'm always walking around downtown.
Are you? I was looking for someone to have lunch with today, and I tried to convince Andy that we should go over to the dinosaur, and he was eating, he was sitting there eating some yogurt with granola in it.
I'm so, I'm sure Andy is very glad that everyone is aware of his lunch choice today. Any other questions, comments? Getting to, to know you, Dave, and Andy as well, and, and just knowing that this kind of comes full circle on your guys' early careers as attorneys working with each other and now coming back together. Just, that's great. And I know that we are all grateful for everything you guys have done for, for the village and your service here. And you should continue it for at least another 10 to 20 years, just saying.
That's, that's, that's a great idea. I, I appreciate that now that I've turned 70.
All right. All right. Any other questions, trustees? All right, it has been offered a second. We are looking for a roll call vote, Marie.
Trustee Pine.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Alter.
Yes.
You have trustee Decker.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy. Mayor Allen.
I'm yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
All in favor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustees, I had one more item I forgot to bring up, but I will give you guys a shot. Does anyone have anything else they want to bring up? One of the things that came up in email was a suggestion of putting a couple of people together to be the ones to come up with their recommendations on how we handle the ARPA funds, the rescue plan funds. Um, is that something the trustees would be interested in? Having a couple involved and sort of being the lead on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So then I'm, I guess I'm looking, it would be set up as, as our other committee, so we'd have a lead in a, in a secondary. Who would be interested in taking the lead on that? Or is this something that would have to be decided now, Andy, or could we decide it and move on in the next meeting?
Well, that's, you certainly can move it at your next meeting, given where we are in terms of clear final rules. That's not going to happen. Right now, we're just in the comment period on the interim rules that have been proposed. So we won't have final rules for a period of weeks. So this, this certainly, you, you could act tonight, or you could act at your June meeting. I don't think it's a practical matter.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Because, because we won't have final rules.
Trustees, why don't we handle this over email? Does that sound all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
But if I can say one thing, Kevin sent an email that, that, from Albany Business Insider and all the city of Albany, which obviously is much bigger, is, is putting together like a citizens committee to decide how to spend their ARPA funds.
I think with the scale of our small village versus the city of Albany, I think if we publicly put out there that these are the trustees who are involved in this, then their, you know, their ears are open, their phones are ready. If people have suggestions or thoughts and comments, and I, I'm content to go that way, but it does put up, put forward a couple of people to be involved in that and, and listening to people and bringing recommendations to the board. Kevin, thoughts?
No, I just, I'm the one that sent that out, but I just sent it because it's the first time I saw a municipality send anything out regarding the, the funds. And I thought it was way over the top. They must have had like 30 to 60 people as committee members. I don't know how they can come up with any kind of consensus with that many people.
All right, so. Heard it to streamline it, we should keep it down to, just keep it at, as board members and have a committee.
Keep it down to 30, right? Just 30?
Yeah, half, half that, yeah.
All right. Okay, no, I, I agree. Okay, we'll handle it over email and we'll love, have it on the next, next meeting.
Perfect.
All right, anything else? If not, looking for motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I'll move.
I'll give that, give that to Emily second, someone?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Carries. Thank you all very much. Meeting is adjourned at 8:58 PM.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Trustees. Good night, all.